Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. At this time, we are going to stand for the flag salute that will be followed by a moment of silence. We will be led today by Supervisor Crocker.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. At this time, we are going to be convening the special meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors that was agendized, and I know every meeting is special when Michael T. Ennis is a part of it, but this is a special meeting outside of the normal business that we normally undertake, and so we are convening it first, and that is taking up item number one, a request from the Health and Human Services Agency to ratify the proclamation of a local emergency and accompanying emergency orders, including evacuation orders, and any orders rescinding evacuation orders as issued by the Director of Emergency Services or successor. I'm going to read the whole agenda again. I was looking for a period, Jason, there was no period, go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, CAO, County Council, Jason Britt, Health and Human Service Agency Director. We are here today for a special meeting, asking the Board to ratify the June 23rd, 2017 proclamation of local emergency due to flooding, and to ratify and confirm the emergency orders issued by the Director of Emergency Services during the period of June 23rd through June 27th. For further details and an update on the situation, I'd now like to turn it over to our Fire Chief, Charlie Norman.
Good morning. Good morning, members of the Board, Mr. Chair, Mr. Spada, Ms. Peterson. Just kind of a brief summary of what we had over the last four days. On the evening of June 23rd, after some excessive flows that were based at about 14,900 cubic feet per second, we responded to the Kings River Country Club to do some preemptive sandbagging up here in the north side of the subdivision. We did have some, can you see that over here? Would you like me to do this? It works better for you. On the north side of the subdivision. We worked in there, had some sandbags, started some operation. Later on that evening, at approximately 10:00 PM, I had a frantic call from the incident commander and said that we had several breaches along the Kings River, and as we looked forward to Breach 1A, Breach 1B, and Breach 2. Based on the excessive water levels, the breaches in the riverbanks of 20 and 30 feet respectively, and then the bottom at Breach 2 was approximately 50 to 60 feet. So we had some significant problems. So immediately, we had 90 homes threatened. We began an evacuation process and ordered the Emergency Operations Center order opened. We responded with local resources, nine engines, two strike teams from Tulare County Fire Department, two inmate hand crews, strike teams from the State of Cal Fire, five Tulare County Chief Officers, and various resources from RMA, California OES, County OES, Cal Fire, and the Department of Water Resources. At the height of this incident, we committed approximately 200 people to help with the successful mitigation of this incident. Road closures were put in place for firefighters and crew safety, and our first concentration began on the upper breach to try and get a control. Because what happened after this breached in these spots, you would think that the normal anomaly would be to flow southward. It started filling up gradually slowly, and started filling up the fairway and threatening numerous homes to the north and the east subdivision. We worked on that, and the challenge with Breach 1A and 1B is they were only accessible by boat. So there's a lot of safety issues when dealing with inmate hand crews and trying to get them onto a boat. They're not supposed to work next to the water. So we activated Swift Water Rescue Team, used some various flat-bottomed boats that were available in the area, and given the situation, it worked very, very well. Once we started stopping the flow on that particular area, Breach Number 2 was quite a bit more cumbersome. We had a channel that created there that was probably 16 feet. So the only way to handle that was through half-ton rock bags through air support. As we went through that, we went up, did a recon mission, which was fascinating because I really, really despise flying. So Sunday morning was very, very exciting for me. So, once I opened my eyes towards the end of the flight, we were able to get a visual, and the first couple of drops that were made, you saw no sandbag. The channel was that deep, so we knew we had some significant water flows. The California Air National Guard did the service most for us the first day. We had a private copter that came in and worked on it for the second day. And as of last night, we had 180 bags put in there. The flow has slowed down, and we are working on stopping it today with hand crews. As we tied in this flow here on Breach Number 2, we're working putting down road base and ramp dozer line over here to tie that in so it does not affect these houses on 392. At this point, we've had no injuries to firefighters, no injuries to civilians. Flows have been reduced to 12,200 CFS as of this morning, and it's supposed to be dropping in another 300 to 500. We'll get an update from DWR on that. This morning, we began to release crews and mobilize crews, and ironically, we're sending a crew to Riverside County to fight the manzanita fire. So, tis the season, this is what we do. We'll continue to down staff today and look forward to the successful mitigation of this incident. I think the crews, TCSO, RMA, the Fire Department, Cal Fire, Department of Water Resources, it was a team effort, and I think these personnel did a great job in this incident, given the circumstances that we had on Friday night. Would answer any questions that you might have?
Any questions or comments from supervisors?
Sure, first I just want to say thanks to our staff, and Charlie, your leadership in this situation and quick response. There's a great video, which I don't know if we're going to see it today or not, but it shows a drone going, flying over the area, and of course, the old expression, the picture's worth a thousand words, but it's very telling. I did get, I've had communication with Royal Oak, which was not a breach situation, but just a situation where the river, the rising river, had encroached upon that resort and was in danger of going into their office structures and so forth. Do you know, have you, has there been any information on that? He was concerned about having adequate sandbags and that sort of thing, I just wanted to make sure we were accommodating him.
And I was waiting to do a summary report, I just wanted to do the disaster declaration, but I'll bring back some pictures and we'll do a summary report.
Okay, very good, I'll wait.
Once we get fire season closed out. Club Royal Oak, we got in there early, and there were some sandbags placed around the office that was not done by Fire Department personnel, but we were in there, and people had self-evacuated prior to that. And that was around the time of Father's Day, probably the 19th or 20th of early last week.
Right.
Because that was significantly affected, as was Riverland, which we did do some sandbagging operation, and a lot of that just due to the elevated water.
It looked like some of those structures did not get pulled out of there in time, apparently.
It does.
Thanks.
Yeah, I just want to say that Saturday morning, I spent about an hour at the EOC, and, you know, I spent time at EOCs when I was on the Visalia City Council, and of course, it was a great collaboration between Cal OES, DWR, and of course, purchasing and IT and HHSA, and so, just want to thank everybody for their hard work, and have you slept yet?
I had a couple hours the other day.
Okay, all right. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. It's like having a newborn again. Or a couple of hours when you can.
Okay, I think Shucklin was probably there for comedic relief, and the mood was still pretty somber, I think, even when she was trying, but thanks for trying.
I don't have to try hard.
I appreciate it. And I just want to echo the comments made, I think our staff, all departments did a fantastic job in a situation of an emergency. I think that there's a lot of uncertainty, but everybody came together and worked very well and communicated very well with one another, and everybody pooled their resources and skills and really did a fantastic job. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Spada, would you like to say anything to you?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to wrap this up. Members of the Board, ladies and gentlemen, first things first, in terms of the costs, we pulled together thus far that the costs to the county are $225,000 in mounting, and to be sure, we will make every reasonable and maximum effort in order to try to secure as much reimbursement as we can. But, as always, it's a challenging matter, but our staff is on the job right now in order to try to get that, get that job done. If I just may close by making a few comments about what actually had occurred in order to get the job done. The chief was very businesslike in getting to the point and communicating the details, but I'm going to give you the color now, as in terms of exactly what happened. Early Saturday morning, the calls started coming in that we had a real situation out there at the Kings River. And so, County Council, Fire, Sheriff, all their key departments were in the EOC Emergency Operations Center very early in the morning to get things going. After everything was initially organized, then the conference calls started with the state, and it became very clear around noon time that there was a crisis, that 50 homes were in serious danger of being wiped out because there was a long and deep breach, which we've described as Breach Number 2. So, it became very clear that the state was on our side. Cal OES performed magnificently in getting those things done to get an Army, Air National Guard helicopter on the scene early the next morning, Sunday. And the chief, myself, and others went up in the helicopter to view the scene, and although there was some good news in the sense that the water receded, the water was still flowing at a good clip. But, back to Saturday around noon time, we needed thousands of sandbags, 30 cubic yards of sand, and 400 cubic yards of rock that was not cut yet, on the scene, in time for the helicopter that was coming first thing in the morning. And so, through Fire, the Sheriff, County Council, OES, HHSA, Purchasing, Fiscal, PAO, and RMA Roads, that logistical material was delivered onsite, with no address, mind you, onsite, within hours. Whereby Purchasing stepped up and coordinated, getting a quarry operator to open up and start chopping, and then start delivering, and then RMA Roads in getting the bags and the sand from long distances, magnificently performed. So, the materials had to be ready for the helicopter. Large boulders, not boulder, we were advised that it shouldn't be boulder, something. We were advised to give us some direction to indicate the challenge. It had to be larger than a pebble and smaller than a boulder. That was the direction given to us.
Think it's a boulder.
And so, it was done, and then through the strike teams, which included the inmates, they were filling those bags all night, so that when the chopper got there, they were ready to go. So that's exactly what happened, and we're not done yet. So the first day, about eight bags were delivered, and now, how many bags are being delivered, Chief?
180.
180. So, we've accelerated the effort so that Breach Number 2 will be filled, and thus, those 50 homes won't be washed out. Tell them about the dozer line as the interim measure to give us some relief while the airdrops are occurring, Chief.
Trying to do that, to tie in that dozer line with Breach Number 2, real similar to wildland fire operations, instead of cutting a fire line, we're building a berm. And we got back there, and obviously, it was very wet. So, we had to build a road base back there before we could get a dozer in there to build a berm. So, more time consuming than what we would have liked, but still, process went through.
And the final thing is this, Mr. Chairman, Board members. The EOC is supposed to be the operations center where everything is calm, and while all this was going on, you couldn't hear a pin drop. Everyone just doing their job, doing their duty to get it done, and then wrapping up for the night and going home. So it's a true testament to the excellence, the courage, the dedication, the hard work of the Tulare County professionals. And I'm proud to be a part of that, and they performed and performed well. I just got to say again, without the support of Cal OES, who was there for us, all of this could not have been set in motion because they were there with the helicopter to get it going first thing Sunday morning. So thank you.
One last thing, if I could.
Sheriff, go ahead.
I just, I hope we're out of the woods, but I want to just indicate that as of 8 o'clock this morning, Pine Flat, which holds a million acre feet, was at 99, 998,376 acre feet. Back, it's the highest it's been in this whole timeframe. The water, the river was running 15,000 second feet, and they're releasing 12, too. So, my point is, even though it's cooled down, and we've been through all this heat, and we would think it would start to relax, there's still a significant amount of water coming down that river. So, all I just point out is, we ain't out of the woods yet. This thing is still ongoing, and I hope, hopefully, I'm sure the Army Corps feels fairly confident. That's why they're allowing the river to encroach on the reservoir as much as they are. But nonetheless, it's kind of, it's still a little scary to see how much water, because if it was full, and 15,000 second feet were coming down that river because there's no place for it to go, we know what happens. Once it gets over 14,000 second feet, it becomes a real problem. So, anyway, great job, and hopefully, we will find our way to survive all this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much again, Chief. All right, now we will bring it back to our regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors. That is an action item, we need to take action on that first to reaffirm.
We need to approve.
Actually, before we take action, we can take public comment as well. Is there anybody here wishing to speak regarding item number one in our special meeting? Okay, seeing none, I'll take it back to the Board for action. Have a motion by Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Ennis, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, now to the regularly scheduled Board meeting. Item number one on the agenda is Board of Supervisors Matters, and I will start with Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I had the pleasure of attending a RCRC meeting, San Joaquin Valley Policy Council meeting, as well as meeting with one of my RCRC colleagues, Matt Kingsley, who is our neighbor to the east in Inyo County. He's Inyo County Supervisor, and the highlight of those were we were able to meet with the Sequoia Kings Canyon National Park Superintendent Woody Smek and his staff. And we had a robust discussion, we met with him for most of the day. We talked about fire prevention opportunities and making sure that we have good communications when they are doing some of their prevention burns, if not just for the sake of air quality purposes, just to notify. I know my colleague, Matt Kingsley, yeah, was, one of his concerns is that they get a lot of calls regarding smoke and on the Inyo County side when the burns are happening. But we also talked about wildlife and the great success that they've been having with the reintroduction of bighorn sheep on the eastern side of the park, and how they're really doing well and moving west. The herds are coming further west, and they're picking up and growing and being very successful. We talked quite a bit about force management and the great successes they're having, and I think we have some opportunities in the future for Mineral King, where they have received specialized authorization to make some improvements to the road into Mineral King from their side. And they believe that the county, that we have opportunities to seek grant funding that would pay for a vast majority of doing the same thing on our side from Highway 198 to the National Park boundaries. So, hopefully, we can pursue that opportunity and be awarded that. Other than that, we, tomorrow, we will be, Supervisor Worthley and I, will be heading up to Balt Park and seeing some of the work that our county staff is doing up there. I'm very looking forward to that. Escape the heat a little bit and get to see some wonderful giant sequoias.
All right, thank you very much. Supervisor Shucklin.
Thank you, Chairman. On Saturday, I had the privilege of presenting a proclamation to the California Paralegal Association, and our council was there, along with many of the paralegals from the County Council's office, so that was a nice thing to do. Saturday, I attended the Visalia's First Pride Festival, and actually was honored to be named one of the grand marshals for this historical event. This Thursday, we will have our first meeting of the Homeless Task Force at the HHSA offices at 1:30, so I'm looking forward to that. Getting together with all the folks who've been appointed to that task force, meeting everybody, and starting our journey onto working, and hopefully, doing some management of our homeless folks. I always tell people, we're not going to eradicate this problem, but coming together with all the different entities, hopefully, we can find some solution for those who do not want to be in that situation. And lastly, a little unfortunate news, and this last Thursday, one of our Sheriff Canines passed away, K2, who belonged to, was a handler with Deputy Cory Evans, and I just want to hope that all of us can keep Deputy Evans in our thoughts and prayers. We call them their handlers, but they are much more than handlers, these officers and their canine partners. That's literally what they are, they're partners. And during K2's five years for the department, he apprehended 11 suspects, located two guns, and was credited for two suspects surrendering, and he also participated in eight bomb searches. So, again, if we can keep Deputy Evans in our thoughts and prayers at this very difficult time, I'm sure, for him. That's all.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we have a lot on our agenda, but I did want to point out a few things today. At our last Air Board meeting, which was held a week ago last Thursday, we accepted $3 million of cap and trade funds from the California Air Resources Board for a trade-up program on tractors. And very quickly, the way this works, our Tier 2 and 3 tractors are being replaced with Tier 1, or Tier 4 tractors, rather. And then, these Tier 2 and 3 tractors are being refurbished and made available to people who can't afford to buy the Tier 1s or Tier 4s. So, if you have any questions, if anybody in agriculture community has any questions would like to find out more about this, they can contact me or contact the Air Board because it's a real opportunity, it's an air improvement process, and it helps our farming community. Secondly, last week, I was on a tour of the, on the Sequoia National Forest in the Hum Lake District. The issue was tree mortality. We had four supervisors there, district ranger, district staff. We reviewed and some of the fire area that, from the rough fire that occurred two years ago. We were not able to see, but I was advised that we did lose some of the monarchs. Those are what we consider the large, old giant sequoias. Some of them might be 1,500, 2,000 years old. They died as a consequence of those fires, and I think it's pertinent to our conversation later on about the monument. And then, we also were able to see a place on the National Park where, because they had introduced fire into the area prior to the rough fire, when they went back and refired this area as a preventative measure, the giant sequoias survived quite well. It just points out the problem, if you don't do active management, you're going to have some very serious issues with the giant sequoia groves. So that was a very good meeting. Then also, that same day, I went to Sacramento for a meeting the following day. On Temperance Flat, we met with a number of administrative, or I'm sorry, legislative staff and legislators at a brown bag function that was spearheaded by Joaquin and Rambo, our assemblymen, and again, getting out the message about the need for a Temperance Flat, the need for the water that will allow us to continue to farm in San Joaquin Valley. So, that's all I have for today.
All right, that's it. Very, very short Board of Supervisors Matters. Supervisor Worthley, thank you. Supervisor Ennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Wednesday, we met with Colonel Tambauer, who's the acting, or is in charge of all the projects for the Corps of Engineers for the western states, and went over the different issues that we've had with Success TAM, and it looks like that we're moving very, very quickly now towards maybe a decision by the Senior Oversight Group or the SOG Committee. And if we get the right decision, that will be in March of 2018, give us a D-SAC 4 instead of a 3, we'll be able to move forward with raising the spillway at Lake Success. So, looking forward to that, looking forward to this movement. And, of course, Mr. Schaefer keeps everybody on their toes. He keeps telling them, hey, we want these timetables, and we want you communicating with us when things are going to happen and what's going to happen, so we can get this project done. The spillway has been sandbagged at Success. It's not really a safety deal because of overflow. It's to store more water, and hopefully, we can store another 10,000 acre feet of water in there through July, and before we have to start releasing for irrigation. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. A few things that I wanted to go over. First of all, I've had several, several meetings. I feel like every email that I get, well, here lately, that's not related to the Sequoia Monument, but is related to GSAs and overlaps and groundwater issues in the south part of our county. I've been very involved with and meeting with various different groups, trying to bring resolution to that, and I hope that we do so in the near future. I have a retirement board meeting this, tomorrow, at 8:30. Those are very lively, and I appreciate all the presentations that we get from the various investors that we place our money with. And also, we have an outstanding chairman who keeps everyone very entertained, Mr. Roland Hill. If he's here, I just want a little shout out to him. Then also, this Thursday, we have a meeting of the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority, where we are going to be looking at preliminary rates for this upcoming plan year, and hopefully, we'll be able to see some of the benefits of the various efforts that have been undertaken to straighten out the ship, so to speak, in dealing with the issues that we've had there. And I also want to wish everyone a very safe and happy 4th of July. Be very careful with your fireworks. Chief didn't even make a plug for that. I know his mind's wrapped around the flooding right now, but be very careful with your fireworks. And my son asked why I was wearing a flag on my tie when I walked out this morning, and he's only three and a half, so I thought that was pretty cool. But, definitely, I wish everyone a wonderful Independence Day. That concludes Board of Supervisors Matters. We are now going to move on to item number two on our agenda, which is a request to present proclamations honoring self-help enterprises, community services, employment training, and the United Way of Tulare County for their partnership in drought relief from 2014 to 2017. I will call up Andrew.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, Mr. Spada, Ms. Peterson, and members of the audience. As we have several items on the agenda today relating to winding down the drought, I felt it was really important to take a moment to recognize the partners that have enabled us to accomplish everything we did during the drought. As a community, we've been able to provide thousands of individuals with immediate and sustained drought relief. While OES, Resource Management Agency, Fire, County Administrative Office, and several other county departments had a role, I wanted to call attention to the fact that our nonprofit partner organizations really became our eyes and ears in the community, as well as our hands and feet. These partners, again, are Self-Help, CSAT, and United Way. These nonprofit partners provided invaluable services, and provided us with an invaluable partnership during this response. Not only on the financial side, these organizations brought in $20 million of relief into Tulare County. They help residents maintain their health and quality of life, which are two very strategic and important objectives for the county, but also created a sense of trust, a partnership of security within the community the government can't produce on its own. Without these partners, we wouldn't have been able to have a drought resource center, which saw over 200 clients a day at its peak, outreach teams going door-to-door at all hours of the day, seven days a week, or a household tank program that assisted over 50 homes a day with tank installations at its peak. And we also operated a dedicated drought hotline, drought hotline, taking over several hundred calls a month. So again, I do want to make sure that we recognize the importance of these nonprofits organizations becoming our partners. organizations becoming our partners, lending their reputations, the trust that they've built in our communities over decades to this effort. This fulfills FEMA's vision of a whole-community approach to disaster response and recovery, and I think we've become a shining star, highlight of that within the state during these last three years of the drought. Not only do we want to honor these organizations today, we also have requested issuance of 41 certificates of appreciation for the individuals that have accepted positions and worked tirelessly throughout the drought to effect these efforts. Many of these are young men and women that are first entering the workforce, gaining valuable job skills. They're to be commended for their selfless and civic-minded efforts in the drought relief. These individuals have received the gratitude of countless residents who they've established relationships with, whose lives they've touched and helped improve. They have my personal gratitude and admiration, as well as that of, I hope, the county today. So I know there are several individuals here that, to be recognized, or a few that would like to come forward from each of the organizations. And with that, I would like to say thank you to all of these individuals from the bottom of my heart, on behalf of my staff and on behalf of the county. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. At this time, actually, before I call forward the three directors of the organizations to receive their proclamation, I would like to have anybody who assisted in drought relief efforts that's here in the audience to please stand and be recognized. Actually, as Andrew was talking and said, I know there's several in the audience and nobody stood up. I was getting kind of worried, Andrew, but I'm glad that people did show up. I was actually worried that I was going to be presenting proclamations to no one, so. Real quick, I'd like to call forward CSAT, United Way, and Self-Help Enterprises to come forward and receive their proclamations. Please do come and join me in the well. All three of these proclamations are fairly lengthy, so bear with me. I will read each of them. I'm kidding, they're all three the same. But presented to each individual organization in gratitude and thanks for what you have done to help deal with this historic drought. So this is a proclamation from Tulare County's Board of Supervisors honoring Community Services Employment Training, United Way, and also Self-Help Enterprises for their partnership in drought relief from 2014 to 2017. Whereas Tulare County has been in a state of emergency since January 2014 due to California's historic drought, leaving thousands of county residents without running water. And whereas local nonprofit organizations, Self-Help Enterprises, Community Services Employment Training, and United Way of Tulare County have been crucial and irreplaceable partners in the county's efforts to provide immediate and ongoing relief to those adversely affected by the drought by leveraging the reputations of their organizations within the community to increase the successfulness of these efforts. And whereas these organizations furthered their partnership with Tulare County in late 2014 and committed substantial resources to developing innovative drought relief solutions to mitigate the public health and safety impacts for those affected residents, such as a one-stop drought resource center and the household tank program, which allowed thousands to safely remain in their homes and communities despite dry domestic wells and which would have otherwise have rendered these homes uninhabitable. Whereas these organizations have continued to better our communities outside of their involvement with county programs through various activities, including fundraising, advocacy, countless hours of volunteerism, and the development of new programs within their organizations to meet their evolving needs. And whereas Tulare County wishes to express its sincere appreciation for the tireless efforts of the dozens of employees and volunteers within each of these organizations who have dedicated tens of thousands of man-hours, including nights, weekends, and holidays, ensuring that all members of our communities receive resources to combat the health, safety, and economic impacts of drought, regardless of location, language, disability, or other barriers which may have prevented their access to services. Now therefore be it resolved that Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby honor Community Services Employment Training, United Way, and Self-Help Enterprises, its employees and volunteers for their contributions to drought relief efforts within the county of Tulare. Signed by Kyler Crocker, Pete Vanderpool, Amy Shuckland, Steve Worthley, and Mike Ennis. That was the fastest I've ever seen three proclamations ever presented, and I'm giving myself a compliment, just saying. Thank you very much. You know, it's very... It's humbling to be able to honor and recognize you and know that you've provided assistance to residents when they've been in such vulnerable positions in their lives and for their families. And the impact that you have had has been tremendous. And it's difficult to say that we're presenting this proclamation today after just hearing a presentation about the flooding that's occurring at the Kings River, but we can't control Mother Nature, but when Mother Nature dictates us a scenario like that of the drought, we are truly blessed to be able to have advocacy organizations and community-based organizations like yours to be able to help the government to bring resolutions and to improve people's lives. So thank you so much. It's been an honor to work with you and it's my pleasure to recognize you here today. So thank you. Yeah, and then we're going to take a picture. It's just kind of part of the deal. Should I just tape down myself?
There you go. One, two. Thank you.
And if any of you would like to say anything, you're welcome to do so. If not, no big deal.
I would like to say a few words.
It's an open mic.
All right. I just wanted to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors and certainly the OES staff who are with us in the trenches and working with us on the weekends, and the countless of volunteers, the municipalities. I mean, we worked with the city of Porterville, we worked with so many other volunteers, and many county staff, and I know Porterville High School walked those few first weeks with us to kind of begin to identify. So want to say thank you to the board and certainly our Conservation Corps, who were many of the young people who were putting those tanks in with our crew supervisors, all of our staff that participated, and our partners, Self-Help and United Way. We couldn't have done it without them. So thank you.
Well, since she said something. No one was harder, more hard-hit by the effects of drought than Tulare County. And we've appreciated the same partnerships, and I'd like to appreciate the staff that was involved from our three agencies. They really worked with efficiency and compassion in this matter, so we appreciate the partnership with the county.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. On behalf of the United Way Board of Directors and staff, thank you for this recognition. During the program, we received nearly 15,000 drought-related phone calls and conducted over 4,000 follow-up calls. I just want to take a moment to list our water haulers. They were very crucial in assisting these homeowners. Just a quick list, AAA Mobile Solutions, Ashbrook Enterprises, Bubba's Water Truck, Dobie Haggar Trucking, Kyle Coons Trucking, Perrion's Portable Water, Aquaman, and TL's Portable Sinks and Water Trucks. Again, thank you to the Board of Supervisors, the OES CAO's office for your faith in our organization. Additionally, thank you to CSAT and Self-Help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very well done. Next, we're going to move on on our agenda to item number three, which is a request to recognize Kristy Meyer, Chief Probation Officer, upon her retirement from the probation department for her many years of county service. So at this point in time, I would like to call forward Chief Meyer to join me in the well as I present her in honor on behalf of the county. You know, I have to tell you, it's interesting to stand here as chairman of the Board of Supervisors and present a plaque honoring someone who began their service with Tulare County on March 13th of 1977. 1977, I have to tell you, I think, no, no, my dad wasn't even in junior high yet, so I can't, I wasn't even a thought at that time, Chief. I know that for a fact, I think, so. But really, it's a real honor as chairman of this Board of Supervisors to present this plaque, which is the highest honor that the county can bestow upon any of its employees, recognizing Kristy Meyer, Chief Probation Officer, in appreciation of your years of service and dedication to the community and Tulare County from March 13th of 1977 to July 7th of 2017. That's a 40-year career. That is incredible. And the impact that you have had, not only on the probation department, but your staff and the probationers themselves, because you have implemented so much that has had a very positive impact in helping to turn the actual probationers' lives around into positive outlooks. It is really something special, Chief. And you are going to be missed. You are the second chief that I have ever worked with since I've been on the board, and it has truly been an honor to never get a complaint about your department. That's great. And you have been just outstanding to work with, and you are really going to be missed. So my congratulations to you, my wishes, my best wishes for a wonderful retirement, and it has been truly an honor, Chief. Thank you so much. And the microphone is yours, Chief.
Well, when I started as a brand-new, newly-minted deputy probation officer, won in 1977, I had no idea that I'd ever be standing here after 40 years. At one point throughout my career, I decided I was just going to die at my desk, based upon the level of my commitment. But again, somewhere along the line, I changed my mind. I think that what is loud and clear and was made perfectly clear on two occasions this morning is how special Tulare County is. As a chief probation officer, I attend meetings every quarter with chiefs from throughout the state. And as I sit around that room and listen to the tales of woe involving either their judges, or their boards, or their CAOs, or their unions, or their staff, or their relationship with other department heads, I am repeatedly reminded of how fortunate I am to have been in Tulare County. This is an extremely and remarkably collaborative county. We have the support, every employee, every department head, every supervisor of the Board of Supervisors and the CAO. Our Board of Supervisors and CAO work collaboratively with our Superior Court bench, those people that hire and fire me. Our department heads work remarkably well together. There's a great deal of respect, and we genuinely like and work well with each other. That is not, does not happen routinely in other counties. But as a result of that collaboration and those partnerships, our staff, our greatest resource, also work well together. I'm sure that many of you in the audience have no idea the work that goes on behind the scenes between agencies such as Health and Human Services, the Sheriff's Office, the Office of the District Attorney, the Public Defender, our community-based organizations to make things happen that would have, in prior years, quite frankly, never have occurred or been an impossibility. So I want to make a huge shout-out to my staff, both present and past. I see some retirees in the audience. So will you please stand up? Our staff are people that come to work every single day to do the very best job that they can. And as a result of that, as Chairman Vanderpool pointed out, we don't get complaints against our employees. We don't have people complaining about what does get done or what doesn't get done. So again, it's been a wonderful career. It doesn't mean it hasn't had its ups and downs, but I will say that the last 10 have been absolutely fabulous, and I owe that to every person in this room and, quite frankly, all the employees of Tulare County. So thank you.
So Chief, before you exit the building, I'll look to my right at people who do know what 40 years is like, and ask if they have any comments. Go ahead Supervisor Ennis.
Yeah, that's a long time, Kristy, but let me tell you, I was in the car business 34 years, and you beat me out by a whole bunch. But thank you for your dedication, thank you for your organizational skills, and thank you for always looking to the future and making your department a better place for everybody. Thank you so much for your efforts and good luck to you in the future.
Baby Croc, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, I wasn't sure if I got to, considering that I didn't have the 40 years.
You don't know what 40 years is like.
Yes, but I'll let you know in a few, and I mean a few. Kristy, I just want to thank you. We haven't had the opportunity to work that much together, but the little bit that we have, I thoroughly enjoyed it, and it showed the day that you took me around to your department, the passion that you have for what you do and the great work that's being done, and it's a true testament to your work ethic and the passion. And, you know, I don't want to be that much of a downer, but you know, I was a little disappointed. You said you were going to throw a curveball in your agenda items, and I haven't seen that yet, so maybe the next one, you can throw that curveball in.
Supervisor Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, as a fledgling young attorney, I was practicing and doing a little bit of everything in those days in general practice, including representing juveniles. And so I've known Kristy all these 40 years, and you're one of the last, I think, Kristy, to, that I can say that about. And so I do too want to thank you for your wonderful work in Tulare County. And it's so great to have someone who knows the county, knows the system, has grown up through the system, and risen to the position that she did, and done such a tremendous job. It doesn't always follow that longevity necessarily means it results in a good manager. Some people are excellent at what they do, but managing people and departments is a whole different animal. And you certainly have risen to the challenge and done a remarkable job, and it's my pleasure to think of you not as a staff person, but as my friend. So I just wish you the best in your retirement.
All right Supervisor Shuckland.
I'd like to ditto the comments, Kristy, and, you know, meeting with you and, you know, meeting you through the years, your passion is incredible, and I'm, obviously, it's, you know, gone down to your staff, and they will continue to have that, and 40 years is a long time. Hopefully, it's gone faster than some of Chairman Vanderpool's jokes up here, but I wish you the best in your retirement.
Thanks again, Chief. We sure appreciate your career here with our county and Supervisor, I've talked to these five, so the CAO is fun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I just want to say thank you, Kristy. Congratulations, very well done. The administration of the department by you has been nothing short of excellent, and to be sure, you can be characterized as a leader's leader. Thank you.
Next, we are going to move on to item number four on our agenda, which we are actually going to be pulling this item and continuing because the chief was supposed to put together this presentation celebrating his 10-year anniversary, and then he got called to a flood, so hasn't had any time to do so. So we will give him a little bit of a delay and we'll wait till the 11th and take up the item at that time, Chief, if that's okay with you. And now we will take up item number five on our agenda, which is public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item under our jurisdiction, but not on today's agenda. Is there anybody here wishing to speak under public comment? Public comment can and will be limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address.
I do apologize. My name is Lucia Vazquez, and I am the current school board president of the Visalia Unified, but I'm not here in that capacity today. And the reason why I'm apologizing is I do need to do just a quick on item 47 because I do have another meeting. And item 47 is a letter asking for you to support a letter on Executive Order 13792, and I would ask you to please not do that. I think you need to stop and really take a look at that. I think you need to stop and really take a look at that. My understanding is, as Chief Myers stated earlier, and congratulations to everybody this morning, that we are a county that really does work together, and you can see that by the stuff that you've been giving out this morning, that we are collaborative. And I think this really needs a closer look. I know that Wild Places has been involved in organizing quite a few people to talk this morning, and I just wanted to add my two cents that they know the trees. I don't come today speaking on the school board, because I can't just do that, but I do speak for the trees, and I speak for our children. Sequoia, last year, we got an award, a national award, because we do have a sequoia program where we take students up there. They're part of Tulare County, they're part of who we are, and for us to blindly say, yeah, let's go with that executive order, is not in our best interest. And so with that, I add to whoever else will be speaking on 47. Again, I apologize, I do have another meeting, but take your time, and let's look at what's best for Tulare County. By reducing it to the 90 instead of the 300,000 that's there, we lose control, and there's exceptions for things that probably aren't in the best interest for the children of Tulare County. So I thank you to take your time and revisit that rather than blindly saying, yeah, let's do this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments this morning?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Supervisor Board and staff. My name is Gil Harameo. I'm a resident of Visalia. In the early 2000s, I was the Tulare Kings Hispanic Chamber of Commerce CEO, and I did that for nine years, and thoroughly enjoyed it. I worked with many of you. Those I haven't worked with, I look forward to. Then I left that to join Fresno State University as a director for the Small Business Development Center in Tulare County. And as of June the 1st, I left that to go home, and I am now back with the Tulare Kings Hispanic Chamber of Commerce as the CEO.
Congratulations.
My purpose here is just to say, to introduce myself to those that may not know me, and to just reaffirm that the Hispanic Chamber and myself are dedicated to helping the community in all of Tulare County, and trying to succeed, and expand, and go forward, and for mutual benefit. So I look forward to working, meeting with all of you, and working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gil, quick question. Who will be, is there a successor to your SPD?
Not yet.
Okay.
Thank you. He's caring more about Tulare County than what's going on at Fresno State, I'm just saying.
No, it's not Fresno State.
I'm kidding.
It has a lot to do with small business development.
I'm kidding, come on Chalk.
In Tulare County.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak under public comment? And welcome home, Gil. All right, seeing none, I will close the public comment period, bring it back to the board. We will now take up our consent calendar, items six through 42. Item number 10 is going to be pulled completely from calendar. Do any supervisors or members of the public have any consent calendar items they would like to pull for separate consideration or comment?
Thing, and I would move for approval.
Okay. We have a motion by Supervisor Michael Tienis, and we have a second by Supervisor Worthley. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. We will now move on and take up our untimed portion of our meeting, and take up item 43, which is a request from the Health and Human Services Agency to approve an agreement with self-help enterprises governing the transition of the county's household tank program. Mr. Britt.
Good morning, once again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, CAO, and County Council, Jason Britt, Health and Human Services Agency. This will be brief. This is sort of a continuation item to continuing our discussion about the transition of the household tank program to self-help enterprises. So some, just some brief background, on June the 8th, the Governor's Office of Organized Services did issue the Water Tank Continuation Program Guidance, and at this time, there is $2,744,000 allocated to Tulare County to continue hauling water to the tanks that were installed as of June 7th for a little while. On June the 16th, self-help began to send out the letters to the current clients with new application materials, and today, we are here to seek approval with the memorandum of understanding to transition the household tank program to self-help. I just want to go through some quick key terms of the MOU, so you, so you know what's in the MOU, because it's quite lengthy. The self-help, as a, as a, as a part of this, MOU will assume liability and risk for the program as of July 1st, including operating the program prior to the receipt of the grant award. So again, this has been a very fluid situation. They are also obtaining new documentation, removing references to the county by July 31st, and in conjunction with our building folks at RMA, they have, are ensuring that removal of tanks or compliance with all codes and standards will be adhered to by June 30th, 2018. Also, the part of this MOU that's a little different is that because of the tight timeline for transition, we are assisting self-help, the agency is assisting self-help with securing the water until they can get all of their water agreements in place. We don't expect that to go beyond two months, so that they can continue getting the source water to fill the household tanks out in the community. They have agreed, and as part of the MOU, that they will reimburse us 100% for any water that is purchased under that agreement, although I do want to call to the board's attention that if for some unforeseen reason that self-help would not reimburse us, those months would, you know, potentially end up a county cost. Again, we don't expect that to happen, but that is just something that we wanted you to be aware of. And then we're also requesting that they remove all of the equipment and other household tank property from our facilities by September 30th of 2017. I also want to address the tank ownership issue. CalOES has been very, very helpful with us. They have made very verbal statements about tank ownership, that they believe the tanks are owned by the nonprofits. However, they have not put that into any written guidance or document at this time, nor, to my knowledge, are they asking for them back. So we thought, in working with County Council and self-help in our MOU, that we would ensure that we have a disclaimer in the MOU that any residual county ownership interest would be turned over to self-help as a public interest or public purpose finding. And with that, I would like to, before I make the request, I would like to thank self-help once again for stepping in and assisting us in this transition. Without them, this would not be possible, and I won't go through and read all the requests today, since we have a big meeting, but I am prepared to answer any questions if the board has any.
Right, any questions or comments? Supervisor Worthley.
I did have a question about the removal of tanks issued by June 30th of 2018, given the fact that's a year away. And in most cases, we're talking about the reason people have these tanks is because they don't have a well, which means they would have to drill a well or come up with some other source of water by this date. I guess my question is, is there not the possibility that people would be able to work with self-help to, because I understand that self-help is going to own the tanks, that they might purchase the tanks and provide themselves with water, or something like that, as an option in the future? Because, I mean, otherwise, I have a feeling we're going to be back here in about 11 months with some kind of emergency to deal with that situation.
That's a great question. Part of the grant that's coming from the state is going to require a much more intensive level of coordination and working with the homeowner to get to that permanent solution. So the hope is that we will be able to get to some permanent solution before June 2018. The, the grant funding is only, it's not sufficient, but it's supposed to take us through to June 30th. Now, that may change, depending on how the state depends to fund this program, but ideally, that would be the, the hope, would be they would get to the permanent solution. In the event that someone has not, self-help would own the tank, and at that time, they would have to simply go through the building permit process to ensure that whatever requirements are dictated by our code are followed for that type of tank to be on, in that premise, on that premises.
Makes sense. Questions or comments Supervisor Ennis? Any idea how many people are still on the tank program?
440. 430. Yeah.
Any additional questions or comments from supervisors? Any member of the public wish to comment on this item?
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Worthley.
And again, a shout-out, thanks to self-help.
Supervisor Ennis, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. We are next going to move on to item number 44, which is a request from the Health and Human Services Agency to approve an agreement with Horizon Health, Inc., DBA Horizon, to provide comprehensive health and mental health services for the Tulare County Criminal Justice Facilities.
Good morning, once again. I was imagining taking the hook, sending you so much today.
Yeah, you're welcome.
This is a lengthy presentation, but we're going to try our best to get through it as efficiently as possible. I do have with me today, it is my pleasure today to bring to you an update on our contracted medical and mental health care services for our Tulare County Criminal Justice Facilities. I do have with me today several people who may be assisting me in this presentation, depending on the questions that may be, may arise. I would like to recognize Captain Winziger and Lieutenant Corey Jones from the Sheriff's Department, Leanne Williams, and many others from the probation department, and also Charles Guffey, who's our Regional Vice President from Horizon as well, who are all here today to help, assist me with specific questions as they relate to processes within the facility. Our agenda today is to give you some quick background of how we got here, some of the services that Horizon has been providing, a few statistics, discussion about contract monitoring renewal, some future challenges in our requests. So how we got here today was in 2013, 1213, the Health and Human Services Agency released an RFP, a Request for Proposal for Health and Mental Health Care Inmates for Tulare County jails. At that time, the agency's stated goals was to enhance services and increase quality for a lot of our services that we were providing. We received three proposals, and Horizon was unanimously chosen, and this board, on June 11th, 2013, awarded a three-year contract through June 30th of 2016 with the option for three one-year renewals or extensions upon mutual agreement. On June 14th, 2016, last year, approximately a year ago, we came back for that first of the three annual requests, and that takes us through June 30th, 2017. The agreement for 2017 and 2018 is our second one-year request, and I just do want to call to the board's attention that we have sort of ended up in a more of a renewal process versus an extension process, specifically because of the substantive changes that have been had to made to the contract due to the increasing mandates and increasing requirements for services. But that's, that's kind of how we got here today. We are not alone in the contracting for medical and mental health services. There are approximately 30 counties that have contracts with medical services for their jails, either full contracts like ourselves for medical and mental health, or for mental health, or for medical, or some combination thereof. Horizon Healthcare has been our vendor since 2013. They have over 38 years of experience providing inmate healthcare services around the nation. They are the largest provider of inmate healthcare in the country. They serve over 430 facilities in 24 states, and they provide services to just over 320,000, almost 321,000 inmates nationally. Our contract requires them to provide comprehensive medical, mental health, dental, vision services, along with pharmaceutical management and utilization management. And utilization management is ensuring that the services needed and being provided are medically necessary for, for our inmates, and our juveniles. Sometimes we focus on the adults, but this also encompasses our juveniles as well. In terms of medical services, they do all of our intake screening processes, they do medical histories, physical exams, they monitor and take care of chronic care, they do sick call, which are, which you'll see some statistics on that later, infirmary care, they administer all the medications, they do release planning, and they also arrange for specialty referrals. On the mental health side, they do very similar, a large array of services for us, including crisis intervention, counseling, intake, release planning, medication management, suicide prevention, and in some cases, they actually provide small therapeutic sessions for, for inmates who are, who need those services. Last year, we added, we added a little bit of money to the contract to enhance our dental services, so they now provide dental screenings with oral hygiene instructions, they do exams, fillings, extractions, and annual cleaning and exams for those individuals who are incarcerated for more than one year. They also do the annual follow-ups, because with AB 109, we do have a small population of inmates who are committed for over one year in the county jail facilities. So just a snapshot of the last four years since the contract started of average daily population in our juvenile and adult facilities, the sheriff could speak to this much better than I could, but essentially, this is sort of our in-hospital care of folks, because they do a lot of screenings and intakes. Anyone who comes into the jail, anyone who's booked into the jail gets a screening, they get an exam, they get looked at, so they do a lot more work than just what's captured in this average daily population, but this is, gives you an idea of how many people on a daily basis they potentially may need to see. Our total intake screenings, and this is where we go to, these are the people who are also being booked and may bail out, or they may stay for shorter, shorter lengths of time, but we're averaging around 17,000, 18,000 screenings, intake screenings for adults, and around 1,000 screenings for juveniles on an annual basis. So quite, quite busy there. Our total health sick calls, and these are sort of for those folks who are committed in the jails, these are sort of requests for services. So they put in a request, ask to go to the doctor, see the doctor, and this is how many of those requests have come into Horizon and that they have actually seen. So a little over 23,000 this year projected for our adult inmates, and in the lower bottom, where it's kind of shaded, and I apologize, I should have said that upfront, is our juvenile number. So together, it's about almost 28,000 sick calls between health and adults and juveniles that they will have responded to this year. Some of our top medical conditions that we see are hypertension, diabetes, high cholesterol, asthma, and seizures. February 2015 report released by the U.S. Department of Justice compared medical problems with jail inmates and state inmates, and found that many of these chronic conditions are most prevalent in the correctional healthcare system. So we're not alone. These, these continue to be the top medical conditions. So we track the same thing for mental health as we do for health, and these are the number of sick calls that Horizon has projected to see for 1617, is almost 5,000 between our juveniles and our adults, and as you could see by the bar graph, it is a steadily climbing piece of the business. And again, for the top mental health conditions, we see schizoaffective disorders, schizophrenia, bipolar, PTSD, and dysmia, which is really a chronic form of depression. Totally emergency transports, so those ebb and flow. I think what, what is captured here is that, you know, we never know what we're going to get in the jail, how sick someone's going to be. Oftentimes, when they go to jail, whether they be adult or juvenile, sometimes they're, they've been without care for a long time, and they're very ill. So we kind of measure how many emergency transports that they have to make to the emergency room, and this year, we're on track between adults and juvenile to be around 200. We also track hospital admissions, and, and this year, we've seen a little bit of a slight reduction from some of our previous years. We're on track to have about 191 hospital admissions, and I do have to say, Horizon has been very proactive in almost all cases in getting people out of the hospital and returning back to the facility, because they have enhanced the quality of services. They can do a lot of the intravenous fluids, they can do a lot of onsite x-raying, they can do a lot of those types of maintenance therapies that can get them out of the hospital and keep them in the jail infirmary or in the jail, which then, of course, reduces costs later on down the road. So in summary, Horizon, the last four years, has really expanded our health, mental health, dental, and vision services, including annual evaluations. They have implemented electronic health records. They have implemented electronic health records to improve care and data collection. They have been responsive to the needs of the sheriff and probation inmates, and they continuously monitor, implement best practices based on national standards. We do have, you know, everything's not always rosy. There are issues that arise, and we use these two committees to work through some of those issues that we identify. We have a monthly medical audit committee that meets, that has a whole host of people, including sheriff. We do one separately for probation and one for sheriff separately, because there are separate needs and issues on both sides of the house. And at these meetings, we really talk about the data, about process, about procedure, making sure things are keeping on track, ensuring that the quality of medical care is keeping up with standards of care and what's required under the licensing requirements. And then we do have a county oversight committee that is part of the CAO's office, where we review a lot of the risk management issues, the data, and we talk about the finances. So that's kind of how we oversee this contract. Not reflected here, HHSA and Horizon participates in the sheriff's multidisciplinary teams, which provide services to inmates, so they may be successful upon release. So we continue to forge our collaborative efforts and hope to continue working collaboratively. So with that, I'd like to shift to some specifics about our fiscal year seventeen eighteen contract renewal. This year's contract renewal, contract amount is a little over twelve million dollars. There is a two point two seven percent, we call it a CPI increase. CPI was actually three point two seven, but through the negotiation process, we got it down to two point two seven, so. And we've increased staffing on the registered nurses, the mental health therapists, the medical director. We've also enhanced some performance indicators, penalties, and included a clause for staffing shortfall recovery. So again, the increasing in the registered nurses is because this is becoming the standard in correctional healthcare everywhere, whether you're a county jail, a state jail, a federal prison. The days of the licensed vocational nurses or using some of the medical assistants or some of the lower-trained individuals are kind of going by the wayside. So we continue to move that number up to ensure that we're meeting those mandates and having sufficient registered nursing staff on site. And our registered nurses really are the front line. They do a lot of our triage for sick calls. They do our outpatient housing unit. They do sick call clinic and chronic care along with many of our mid-level providers and the medical director. Here's a slide that shows our contract costs over the last four years, well, five years now, will be year five going forward. Again, the darker shade at the bottom is the juvenile portion, and the lighter shade is the adult portion. This year's increase is seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars over last year, and that is primarily due to the addition of those registered nurses, the additional mental health therapist and medical director time. The Bureau of Justice Statistics and the California Legislative Analyst Office continue to report year-over-year increasing medical and mental healthcare costs, and both sources cite similar reasons for the increasing costs. A lot of the spending drivers are the prevalence of infectious and chronic diseases, mental illnesses, substance abuse, and alcoholism is another big driver. We also have an aging inmate population, personnel salaries and costs to provide expanded services, and increasing litigation is driving the scope of medical, of medical care. The reality is that the scope of services and the requirements for jail medical are being made through case law, really, which then, of course, requires much higher legal mandates that we have to meet. So I didn't want to be a downer, but I did want to let you know that we're not alone. We're all, we're all facing this cost. We did do a comparative analysis of five counties that do have contracted medical services in our area. Not all counties contract in our area, but the ones who did. And at an average cost per inmate, Tulare is in the second column. Our contract, every contract is different, so it's really hard to do apples and oranges comparison, but we, I think we did our best. The contract that's most like Tulare's with, including the average daily population numbers, is Stanislaus. So that is quite a difference between, between those. But that's kind of where we stand in terms of comparative costs. We also thought it was important to kind of point out that, based on our percent of yearly increased cost, that we are tracking, on average, with the state. So again, the state sort of becomes that barometer of what is coming down the pipe, because they're the ones that first get hit with the legislation or the litigation and the advocacy groups. CDCR prison costs have grown about seven point seven five percent over the, on average, over the last four years, and ours are about six point six. So again, just kind of, as we look at the forecast out, that's one of the barometers we kind of use to see how we're tracking. I do want to take a moment to talk about the performance indicators. I do think this is very important. We have increased the number of performance requirements and indicators from seven to nineteen. We've also added that a three thousand dollar penalty per failed indicator per quarter will be assessed to the contractor if they fail to meet the agreed-upon performance standards. And the contractor, which is new for us this year, will provide a credit for positions failed less than ninety-five percent of the time. So if there, if for some reason there's positions that they're either choosing not to fill or can't fill due to the demands in the labor market for healthcare providers, we will, we're in a position to recoup some of those monies from the contract instead of them using it elsewhere in the contract. So some new indicators, just examples we put in, was to track intake timelists, to look at annual exams, women's health, and a lot of reporting around communicable diseases. So we feel good about, about some of those. Again, our future challenges continue to be the increasing political and legal scrutiny of jail, health, and mental health services, increasing costs associated with salaries for our licensed medical staff. As you know, we're in a very competitive healthcare market at this time, and that drives up the wages. Along with that, we have license staffing shortages, and then Title XV reform is really the big one that we're looking at and watching, as I'm sure the sheriff and probation is as well. And that one is really, what is, they're getting very specific. The current bill, or the current regulations that are in Title XV, sort of the current form, would require things like a minimum of one full-time physician per facility. It would require, really, it's that the sheriff and probation would have additional costs with transporting youth to contracted physicians. It would require additional OB-GYN hours and equipment to perform certain requirements. And in all, basically, our assessment is the Title XV reform is basically requiring counties to provide the same level of medical and healthcare that state prisons perform. So that's something we'll watch. It's still in draft form. There's lots of comments being taken by many counties and across the state, but that is one of our future challenges we have on the radar that we're watching very closely. And of course, as you know, all regulations turn into cost. So at this time, I would like to acknowledge the board for their support in this contract over the last four years. I think this is the first time we've had a comprehensive report on this contract. I'd like to appreciate the CAO's office for their help in this process as well. And of course, we've forged an invaluable relationship with the sheriff and probation and county council, as well as Horizon, to continue providing these services to our juveniles and our adult inmates. And I know that there are representatives here today. If you would have questions for them, they would be happy to answer them. And then, and that does conclude my presentation. I would just request that we approve a one-year contract renewal from July first to June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, receive the presentation on the Horizon Health contract, and authorize the chairman of the board to sign three copies. And I will, happy to answer any questions.
I like the moving question mark. Does anybody have any questions?
Just a quick comment.
Sure, questions, comments?
It appears that those counties that have not, that do not contract out, in many cases, they have their own county hospitals, so that would probably make sense why they're using them. And I recall, this is just sort of to the benefit of some of the newer folks on the board here, the reason that the county went in this direction was because we were having our services provided with in-house, our home health, human services people, and it was a great concern of the liability that attached to that for the county. And it seems to me we've done very well going forward with Horizon in terms of limiting that kind of liability back to the county. And that was one of the major reasons for doing it, besides being able to provide a higher level of service for our inmate population. And then, this was before we had the requirements of having people stay for longer periods of time, which is another whole new change in terms of jail services. So I think it's been a very good, successful partnership with this company and fully supportive of the request.
And I thank you, it is very thorough, and the historical aspect of it was very helpful. And I'm sure the mental health aspect of our inmates is a major factor in recidivism and whatnot. So I'm supportive of this.
Thank you.
All right, any questions or comments from members of the public related to this? Supervisor Crocker?
I just want to make a few comments, and thank you for the presentation. Very helpful, no, nothing necessarily that. But I just want to point out that, based on the information provided, we've had a five-and-a-half percent drop in our inmate population, and yet, hospital admissions were up three-and-a-half percent. Emergency transportation were up eleven point eight percent. Intake screenings were up ten point seven percent. Mental health treatments were up seventy-three point nine percent, and sick calls were up ninety-eight point seven percent. And that's the challenge of working in this regulatory environment.
And it also speaks to, and that's a good point, Supervisor, thank you for pointing that out. It also speaks to the chronic illnesses and the acuity of the inmates that we have, that we're seeing in the jails. Because of that, it is lower population, but really having to provide more services. And that's really one of the drivers.
Any further questions or comments from board members? I too wanted to thank you for the presentation. I know that this was a request that I had made, I think, last year.
Long time ago.
A long time ago. But we had entered into this, and it was highly contested at the time, and we weren't really sure what direction to go as a board regarding the outsourcing of the provision of jail healthcare. And I know I had a little bit of hesitation at the time that we did this, but I'm very happy with the results. Unfortunately, we do not have any control over the regulations put upon us and that we have to abide by. But I do think that Horizon has done a good job of providing a suitable level of care for the inmates while helping to control costs as much as possible. And I think that we're all getting a good bang for every buck that we're spending here. And I thank you for really bringing this information to light. I think it's very important to make this very public. Any questions from, or comments from members of the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it to the board for action.
Move approval?
We have a motion by Supervisor Shucklin.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Crocker. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, we are next going to move on to item forty-five, which is a request from the Resource Management Agency to approve an additional ten thousand dollar expenditure subject to final budget approval in the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen Business Opportunities Work Program to be utilized for a limited membership in the Tulare County Economic Development Corporation. Mr. Washam?
Good morning, Chairman, fellow board members, CAO and county council. Mike Washam, your Associate Director for the Resource Management Agency. I don't have a PowerPoint this morning. I want to be brief. I saw the length of your agenda today, so I just wanted to touch base on this. Back in April of this year, I presented to your board the proposed work plan for our Economic Development Office for the next fiscal year. And at that time, your board directed staff to come back, to come back and look at a limited participation with the EDC going forward. So that's why we're here today. Just to give a little background, wanted to look at what, what type of services? What does the EDC provide? So in your agenda item, on page two, is really a list of the different types of activities that the EDC conducts throughout the county. I'll briefly talk, talk a little bit about that and then give the alternatives. The financial and economic impact analysis is something new that the EDC is doing. There's a one-page flyer that was handed out. That's in relationship to a project that they're working with in conjunction with the city of Visalia. And you can see how that shows the direct job creation and the economic impact of that, the positive, and it looks at the multiplier effect for what that looks like for the community. And this particular project they're looking at, it identifies what the net benefits are to the city and to the county. And this is a tool that's useful for analyzing when we're looking at particular projects and for the county. They also maintain a real estate database that keeps all the properties that are available in the county and direct, those inquiries directly to the local jurisdiction as opposed to themselves. So those that are located within the cities, go to the cities. If we were to participate at that level, it would be the, the prospects would be coming to the county directly. They also do some retail development analysis that has identified what certain companies are looking for, which are in growth mode at the time, and those are, those provide targets that marketing can go after. They also participate in trade shows. They work with the California Food Processing Expo the last couple of years, and they're proposing to do that. They also create and provide a quarterly and annual economic development reports that are focused on Tulare County, and they host the Annual Economic Summit. The latest quarterly report was distributed to you just now. And they also work on the comprehensive economic development strategy, the SEDS report, which has to be updated. Well, it's updated annually, and it has a comprehensive update every five years. And that's required to be able to obtain grants through the Economic Development Administration through, through the feds. So with that, that's kind of some of the activities that they do. All of the cities are participating currently. And your board was looking at a limited, what we would get for limited participation. So on page three, in the middle of your staff report, talks about the limited participation. Membership at ten thousand would receive acknowledgement in all of the, on the website, on brochures, information going to prospects. We would have webinar access and discounts We would have webinar access and discounts for certain events, and we'd have one economic analysis done for one time per year. And then there's some other, a couple of other things. So that's what that's looking at. For full, an alternative is listed as far as full participation, what that would look like, as well as the alternative of staying the status quo without any. So that's really what I wanted to talk about, but as far as collaboration, the staff has always been collaborating closely with the EDC. We've ongoing, even though we weren't officially participating. The EDC is currently working with a project that's going to be located in northern unincorporated area of Tulare County. It's going to reuse an existing abandoned facility and has potential for 100 manufacturing jobs, and I'm actually meeting with that company and the EDC tomorrow to discuss that project. Also, they worked in conjunction with the Central Valley EDC, and there's a bioenergy roundtable going on in Madera on Thursday that I'm going to be speaking on that panel to talk about digesters. They've set that up in coordination with our local EDC as well as the Central Valley EDC. And there's about a half dozen German companies that are looking to invest in digesters and they're looking for opportunities in the Central Valley, so I'll be speaking at that event on Thursday. And again, I'd mentioned the comprehensive SEDS strategy that we participate with that, and normally the EDC has historically taken the lead on that required annual project. So with that, I'd just like to, I know that there's members of the EDC Board of Directors that are in the audience that may wish to talk about this, but that's staff's report. If there's any questions.
Any questions or comments from board members?
I'd just like to ask Michael one question. Do you feel like this expenditure is worthy of what we're going to get?
I think that as, what we did four years ago when we stepped back out of the EDC and really put our own effort forward, I think we've proven that we're able to do that on the county level, but I think this is a step further. I think sometimes there's confusion in the marketplace when there's different entities saying the same thing. So having a uniform approach to the greater market, there's benefits to that. There's certainly benefits. Like I said, tomorrow I'll be meeting with a company that I had no knowledge of except for the EDC bringing it to us, and that's a fairly significant proposed project. So I, there is definitely value to this.
Any additional questions or comments from board members?
I'll wait until.
Okay. Any members of the public wishing to comment on this item, please come forward, and you can use either microphone related to this.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Spada, and guests this morning. My name is George Vazquez. I'm the current Chairman of Tulare County EDC. And in the guests here, we have President CEO Paul Saldana. I have next to me one of our board members, Jose Salgala. We have Colby Wells and John Lawless and Strad Herrera, our staff and the audience here. We just want to again thank you for the participation, the EDC, participating with the EDC. We're here again in front of you to continue that participation and share how important it is to partner together going forward. Just a bullet point or two, the county is one of the founding entities in 1983, and we are encouraging the board to consider the full participation membership with the EDC. Perspective activity is up, and the EDC, as Mr. gentleman right before we spoke, the EDC is taking more substantial recruitment efforts. They're focused on job and revenue benefits to the city, county, and local districts. So we want the board to consider full participation with the Tulare County EDC. And Mr. Salgala here, wanted to say a thing or two.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members, Jose Salgala, Councilmember, City of Tulare. I have a pleasure of serving as one of the board members on this Economic Development Corporation and wanted to be here to lend my support to have you consider becoming a full partner. There are a lot of exciting things that are happening throughout our cities, throughout the county. In particular, ours in the city of Tulare, we worked very hard to change some structures in our city departments to make economic development a full force focus, to make sure we do our part to grow our city, to bring in more jobs, to bring in more economic development. And so we're asking, we're here today to ask you to consider joining us as a full partner. There's a lot of things that we can continue to do. We've been talking about trying to create some biotech corridors here in the county, trying to bring in more type of manufacturing jobs, trying to find different alternatives for folks to have a good paying job. So we like to urge you to consider becoming a full member and joining not only the cities, but all the other folks that are working to make economic development here a priority in the county. Thank you.
Any additional public comments? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for further discussion, questions, and action.
I just, I just have a comment. I want to thank the TCEDC for working with us as far as coming back into. I know we've been, the county has been out of the EDC for four years, and I'm sure that this was a special partnership, the founding partnership that we're able to get into. And I think, I hope one day that we can become full partners again with the EDC. I think it's very important as companies look to Tulare County and the different cities that they do see that collaborative effort, the partnership with the county and all the cities. I think this is a good start, but hopefully in the future we can see that we've gained a lot from this and that we can gain more in the future with a full partnership.
Any additional comments, questions Supervisor Worthly?
I feel like a class historian here. The reason why the county removed itself from the Economic Development Corporation was that we did not believe that the amount of the investment had a return on investment to the county. And I think we've demonstrated when we pulled back and created our own economic development that we've been very successful in this county. And so I'm not opposed to this process of a limited type of engagement, and I would not say that the future engagement couldn't involve full membership, but it really comes down to efficacy. How effective is this organization in improving Tulare County? Now, we recognize improvements to the cities are helpful to the county as well, but we were the number one funder of this organization for many, many years. And year after year after year, we were asked what was our return on investment, and we never really got very clear indication that we had much of any. So this, I have again, no objection to doing the limited thing, and if it turns out that we find that it's been very successful, looking at full membership would be an opportunity or possibility. But certainly, just keeping in mind that our, if you had a side-by-side comparison, when we went to our own internal organization, we had, got a lot more bang for the buck. So that's kind of the background here.
Supervisor Crocker.
I just, I'm supportive of the limited membership. I think that one of the points that was made in the staff report as far as full participant membership was that the county might be a voting member. And I would just encourage the EDC that, to have a partnership, I think that even with the limited membership, that offering a board seat so that we truly have a partnership for the county, whether that's staff or someone up on the dais, I think that would, that would be a good faith effort towards having a partnership.
Any additional questions or comments Supervisor Ennis?
No, I'd support the limited, but not quite.
Okay. And thanks for the presentation, Mike. I think that was very helpful. You know, I've gone on record saying multiple times that I don't think that enough effort can be expended upon economic development efforts within the county. I think it helps every one of us, whether growth occurs in the city or in the incorporated cities or in the unincorporated county. I think it's just, all economic growth is good. I voted against the county withdrawing at that time, a few years ago, but at this point in time, I do think that after meeting with the EDC and having several conversations with them that you and I had, I think that there is benefit to being affiliated with the EDC, showing the county's support, creating more of a unified voice, and I think that a limited membership does do that. If you actually look at the amount of dues paid to the EDC on an annual basis by some of the smaller jurisdictions, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that there are incorporated cities that pay less than $10,000. Is that correct? Do you know, Mike, or not?
I do not know. I believe that Farmersville and Woodlake struggle for being able to participate. I wouldn't be able to address that directly, but I believe in that range.
Yeah, it's somewhere around that ballpark, I thought. But regardless, I do support the county being affiliated and working with the EDC. I think that we can work collaboratively, and I think that a $10,000 partial membership is a great start toward that end. And I will say too that the county forming our own Economic Development Office within the Resource Management Agency wasn't something so that we could compete with the EDC. It was so we could make sure that there was a primary focus in the unincorporated part of the county rather than on behalf of everyone, but everybody does benefit from any economic growth that does come here. And so I would continue to say we get a great bang for our buck using our own Economic Development Office, but I do think there will be a return by being a partial member in the EDC as it currently stands. So that's kind of my perspective, and Chair will entertain a motion at this point in time.
Move approval of the item.
I have a motion to approve the item, which is the staff recommendation of a $10,000 partial membership.
Yes.
By Supervisor Shuckley, and I have a second by Supervisor Worthly. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We are now going to move on to item number forty-six. Julieta.
Good morning, everyone. Julieta Martinez, Chief of Staff for the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. Before you, is a request from the Board of Supervisor's staff to approve a good works funding policy and procedure, as well as a revised good works funding agreement template and separate agreement template for county department projects. So the authority for the use of good works funds is found in Government Code Section 26227. Government Code Section 26227 states that the Board of Supervisors of any county may appropriate and expend money from the General Fund of the county to establish county programs or to fund other programs deemed by the Board of Supervisors to be necessary to meet the social needs of the population of the county, including but not limited to areas of health, law enforcement, public safety, rehabilitation, welfare, education, legal services, and so on. This board has for many years annually appropriated a certain amount of funding from the General Fund to support small-scale good works activities in each district. Each supervisor has the discretion to identify programs or projects in their districts that meet the criteria stated in the government code. This board intends to formalize this policy and these procedures to be revised from time to time to further clarify the board's expectations with respects to good works funding, to ensure that good works funding continues to be used in a responsible manner consistent with all applicable laws. The policy and procedure before you today is simply putting our practice into a policy format. This is something that staff has been doing with the board for a couple of years now. We just wanted to formalize the process and add to the transparency the public sees. As you know, when the board does enter into any type of donation or good works agreements with an organization, that includes oversight from our C.O. to make sure spending is being done efficiently, as stated in the agreement. It does come before the board. Those documents and agreements are made available to the public. I believe you even had one on today's agenda. So we're just formalizing this process, making it more transparent for the public, and also just helping staff as we go through staff changes understand how to carry this program forward. With that, if you have any questions?
Any questions or comments from Supervisor Shuckley?
I have a question. Julieta, when the good works are expended to a certain organization and part of that expenditure, the donation involves a, say a plaque, you know, you do a park and because of the amount of the good works fund donation, there's a plaque there. Does that plaque have the individual supervisor's name on it or the whole board?
A lot of that because we've already donated the money and agreed that they could, the organizations are to use it. If they choose to put a plaque on there, we leave it up to them. We, even though, say the supervisor entered in the agreement, the funding is usually on behalf of the county, so we prefer to be the county as a whole or the board as a whole. There might be instances where we might miss it, or they just want to, you know, show gratitude to a specific supervisor, but with the understanding in the agreement outlined that this is county funding through the supervisor's wishes.
Can that be changed to where, in an instance like that, where there is a permanent recognition from the funds, that it just say Tulare County Board of Supervisors rather than have an individual's name on that? Because sometimes I think it could be confusing to the public that, did Supervisor Shuckley personally give that money or did it come from the good works funds? And you know, I know we give a lot to other individual things, and there's some recognitions maybe in a, in a program or something, but when it's a permanent marker on a facility or a park, I just feel like it should not have the personal supervisor's name on there.
Absolutely. That can be changed, and should a request like that come forward in the near future, we can just add that or stipulate it in the agreement to say, you know, this is on behalf of the county and make sure it's not, I don't like to say glorifying one individual, but just, you know, excluding one person.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Chair.
I fully concur with that, but I think it should be more than just permanent. I think, because a lot of times things will go out and there'll be publications and so forth. I think it should be in the agreement that any reference to good works funds should be made to the county of Tulare, not individual supervisors. I've always struggled with that. I've always, whenever I've been requested, I always tell them it's not Steve Worthly giving this money, it's the county of Tulare giving this money, and all the credit should go back to the county of Tulare, not to the individual board members.
I'm for that even more.
Yeah, I agree that it shouldn't say an individual supervisor's name, but it should say the Tulare County Board of Supervisors or the county of Tulare, whichever of the preferences. But I, I think it should never be done on behalf of one individual supervisor, but rather the entire Tulare County Board.
And we can certainly add that phrase or sentence into the policy and procedure since we're stating it for the record. You are more than welcome to make amendments, and we can have that included.
Sure.
And I think that's the way people have been looking at it whenever we do donations in my district. Thank you comes back, thank you Board of Supervisors, then come back, thank you Mike and his fifth district supervisor.
Hasn't always been that way in every district, however.
Portobillians must have a good understanding of the good works system.
There's more people in my district than Portoville. I go here to Kennedy Meadows.
I'm kidding. Supervisor Crocker.
Kennedy Meadows. Yeah, I'm putting on my old PG&E hat, you know, we did grants on a regular basis annually, and so this is very much in accordance with what we dealt with as far as working with nonprofits, and so I fully support this effort. The one thing that I would like to add, as far as a category, when checking off, I would just say that we add a community vitality or something, the verbiage doesn't necessarily have to be that specifically, but something that encompasses the spirit of when we participate with environmental causes or business organizations. It doesn't really, I don't know that either of those, and there's probably others that fit into the categories listed on the last page.
And before I open it up, in case there's anybody who'd like to comment, I just want to say a big thank you to Melinda Benton, Jennifer Takahana, Barbara Grunwald, who did extensive, extensive review. I think our C.O. and chairman also got a chance to maybe take a glance at this, but these ladies worked really hard, nitty-gritty to look over every aspect of this policy just to make sure it was in accordance with the law and accordance, something the public can understand and that, you know, people can understand how we want this program to function. So thank you to those individuals.
What about Deanne? What's our council do?
Of course.
Don't you look at stuff too, Deanne?
She allows her staff to assist us.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
We're grateful.
Any further questions or comments from board members? Questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, seeing none, the board will entertain, the chair will entertain the direction from the board.
I'd like to move approval with the addition of no personal recognition from the good works funds.
And also the requirement that, also what was mentioned by.
Yes. Community Vitality Award.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We have a motion by Supervisor Shuckley. A second by Supervisor Worthly. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we're going to move on to item number forty-seven, which is a request from the Board of Supervisor's staff to approve sending a letter to Secretary Ryan Zinke, Department of Interior, regarding the review of the Giant Sequoia National Monument pursuant to Executive Order 13792.
Hello, everyone. Julieta Martinez, Chief of Staff, County Board of Supervisors. So before you today is a request to approve sending a letter in regards to the current review of the monuments as provided back in April by President's executive order. President Trump had charged Secretary Zink to review the monuments created since January 1, 1996 and span at least 100,000 acres. Before you today is a letter providing comment, and I want to make it clear, it's not a resolution. It's not us actually taking action as to what's going to happen, but these are our comments or the comments on behalf of the Board of Supervisors to add to this review. Should they or should they not be taken into consideration by the actual Department of Interior is up to them. So President Bill Clinton created this national monument in 2000 through Presidential Proclamation 7295. The designation was intended to protect the unique Giant Sequoia Groves. At the time, it was a very quick process. Public opinion was taken into consideration, I believe. It may not have been as much as opinion as boards or communities at the time wanted to give. So it's been a couple of years since the original designation. Under this current review, it's considering whether or not monuments were properly designated under the 1906 Antiquities Act, whether the federal government has the actual resources to continue the protection of all these monuments throughout the U.S., and what the community and people surrounding these areas, what their thoughts are. Just to give some background, we've had some public comment, we've had phone calls, we've had emails in regard to this letter, and some people have asked where this is coming from. And so just as a brief background, this board has gone back to Washington annually to advocate, you know, on different topics. And as you know, I came before you, maybe February, March, to talk about our trip to Washington in May. One of our meetings, which was published and noticed, was with the Department of Interior staff. The topic of the monument came up at the time and just saying, you know, if the county is willing, able to maybe just provide some comments to take into consideration as they look at the Giant Sequoia National Monument, which is what we are trying to accomplish today. The draft letter before you is taking an angle of active forest management or more aggressive forest management in the monument, in the forest as a whole overall by the Forest Service. And we're taking a stance via tree mortality. It's a subject that we've been discussing for a couple of years now, that this board has gone back to Washington to talk about. It came about earlier before discussing flooding and the drought and the bark beetle and wildfires and the issues that have been ongoing in this county and many counties up and down the valley. And so we're offering And so we're offering comment because we also want to protect the Giant Sequoias. However, leaving them untouched might not be the best option, and that's the stance this letter is saying. There's been a lot of passive management perhaps, and we need to get a little more aggressive. The letter was published with this agenda item. There's copies made available to the public. Like I said, people have been calling in. I believe people are here to offer comment. One comment that is not in the letter, and just to clarify because I've been hearing, and it is up to this board if they'd like to include it or not, is to reduce the size of the monument. We've been getting a lot of comments as to why we're asking for that. That's not in the letter at this time. It doesn't mean you cannot add it, but I just want to add that to the record that currently we are not asking for a downsize. We're asking to review the management in the actual monument, and so a lot of the comment has come to that. So I just want to say, should this board want to take that route? It's an option open for discussion. Today, we're asking to approve this comment letter as is so we can submit to the Department of Interior. Of course, if you have any changes or amendments, you're more than welcome to make it. But again, I know there's maybe members of the public that'd like to speak to you. So with that, I turn to the chairman.
Any questions or comments from board members?
I'd like to wait until we have the public comment.
Okay. At this time, I will take up public comment. Public comment is going to be limited, as it states in the notice to the public regarding the public comment period, to no more than three minutes for an individual speaker and no more than fifteen minutes for the entire public comment period. I do have seventeen requests. That's less than one minute per person. So, and I do have more requests coming, I think. So please do keep your comments brief so that all members of the public who are interested in speaking may be heard. At this time, I've done some shuffling of the seventeen that I have, and I will call forward Mary Merriman to speak at this time. And you can use either microphone.
Thank you for letting us speak. My name is Mary Merriman. I'm, yeah, belong to the, represent the Alta Peak Chapter of California Native Plant Society. Forgive me, this makes me very nervous. I'm here to speak out against any reduction in the size of Giant Sequoia National Monument. The monument, monument was established in order to stop the continued logging of trees in and around the Giant Sequoia Groves. Sequoia trees were left standing alone in deserts of clear cut. Sequoias have shallow roots sitting on rock aquifers and need protection of the entire forest ecosystem, the watershed that surrounds, that supports them, and the trees and other vegetation around the trees. They were not adequately protected before the monument status, and we do not believe that they will be adequately protected with reduction in the monument's size or with other changes that could go along with reducing the monument's size. Intact forest is crucial to the water supply of the Central Valley. It allows percolation into groundwater, reduces spring flooding, and this is all accomplished by having intact forest. Economic indicators such as personal income, employment, population growth show that the economy and communities around the monument has continued to grow. The monument designation did not harm the local economy. Thousands of visitors, campers, hikers, hunters, property owners, small business owners benefit from a well-managed forest. It's not clear who will benefit from a reduction in monument size, and it's not clear exactly what would happen with logging if the monument's size is reduced. The idea that logging helps prevent forest fires is not based in science. What has been proven is that prescribed burn managed wildfire, natural wildfires, and mechanical thinning done properly is effective in reducing wildfire as supported by Sequoia National Park. As we speak, hazard trees are being removed from the forest. Prescribed burns are happening to control wildfire, and it is not necessary to remove monument protections in order to remove hazardous trees or to remove fire hazards near homes and structures. Some fires will continue and should continue. We urge the Board of Supervisors to request Secretary Ryan Zinke to keep the Giant Sequoia Monument intact with its present size and to urge funding of a visitor center for the monument so that people can enjoy, enjoy and appreciate these trees more fully. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[905.12][905.12](APPLAUSE). Next, I have a request from Joan Parker.
Okay, great. Thank you for doing that. I appreciate that. Next, I will call up Sarah Friedman.
I thought you said my name.
Someone's got to turn. Please, please speak when called upon so that I'm not confused. I have a number of requests in front of me. Joan Parker?
That's me.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.[936.75][936.75](LAUGHTER). Well, someone, someone got up and said that I withdraw my request, and I don't know who that is, so.
No, I did not withdraw my request.
Go ahead.
My name is Joan Parker. I'm from Springville, and I'm here today actually representing Tulare County Audubon. Audubon's position, not just Tulare County, but also California Audubon and National, is that, excuse me. The most important thing is to ensure the healthy growth of these special trees. They do provide habitat for birds, which Audubon is very concerned about. I forgot to bring my water with me, sorry. So we are also, your fifth paragraph, you state that you believe that this has constrained the ability. Audubon actually believes the opposite. We believe that there's nothing in the monument designation that prevents. We believe it actually provides better protection. We might like to go further, but basically, Audubon would ask that you not send this letter and that you actually support maintaining the current designation of the larger monument size. I'll stop now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[1031.66][1031.66](APPLAUSE). Next, I have a request from Sarah Friedman.
Hi, Sarah Friedman. First off, I want to thank the board, but also, you know, noting the huge number of folks in attendance, I think fifteen minutes is a little short to really cover the range of concerns that this seems to have brought up.[1054.83][1054.83](APPLAUSE).
Your, your time's rolling.
Okay, recognize that. You know, I want to reinforce the comments that were just made, that the management plan already covers a full range of fuel management alternatives that would be considered in addressing the community's wildfire concerns. I also want to reinforce that there's a real need for independent funding to execute those management objectives and, you know, ask the county when they're making that, those trips to D.C. to really reinforce that message, and I think the community is happy to get on board and do whatever it takes to make that request for funding as well from whatever sources we have. I also want to get in the record some specific points on an issue I'd heard, you know, a few times recently about whether there's a prohibition in the monument on resale of logs or biomass that could in fact be kind of hampering execution of some of these fuel management techniques. I want to give other folks a time to actually speak, so I'm wondering if I can just get that in the record.
Sure.
Now.
You can submit that letter.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next, I have a request from Stephen Evans.
My name's Steve Evans. I'm a representing, representative of the California Wilderness Coalition. We're a statewide organization dedicated to the protection and conservation of wild places on our public land such as national monuments. I'm not a resident of Tulare County, but not only do I feel compelled to be here to support the Giant Sequoia National Monument, a place that's near and dear to my heart, but also it gave me an opportunity to add a day to my trip and go visit the national monument tomorrow. So thank you for that opportunity. I did want to, national monuments provide us a lot of services. Not only is it a place for recreation for millions of people, but it also protects the features of the monument, the Giant Sequoias that made the monument possible. But they also, national monuments, like most of our public lands, are a source of our drinking water. The Giant Sequoia National Monument provides water to downstream communities from the Kings River, the Coia River, the Thule River, the Kern River, and a lot of other tributaries. So it's important that the national monument be well managed. And I know one of the issues raised in your letter is that you believe the national monument, the Giant Sequoia National Monument, has constrained the Forest Service's ability to manage fuels and reduce fire, wildfire threats. In fact, this is, this is a problem caused by one hundred years of fire exclusion and the drought. There is no difference in terms of the tree mortality issue with adjacent national forest lands that aren't national monument. That tree mortality problem is a severe problem in the central and southern Sierra and the West Slope, and the Forest Service overall is having trouble addressing it. Has nothing to do with regulations pertinent to this national monument, has a lot more to do with the fact that the Forest Service has insufficient budget to address this problem. And also, as an agency, although I have great admiration and respect for the professionals in the U.S. Forest Service, as an agency, it's difficult to convince that agency to do things differently. I want to point out that the Giant Sequoia National Monument Plan clearly allows a good response to this tree mortality problem. I'd like to submit this as evidence. And also note, well, I'll just close, let, let other people support it, but I, I would urge this board to, instead of the letter that you currently have as drafted, draft a letter to the Trump Administration, Congress urging that the Forest Service be funded to address this problem under the current regulations and management guidelines we have. Thank you.[1309.44][1309.44](APPLAUSE).
Next, I have a request from Sal Casares.
I would like to step aside momentarily and allow another speaker to speak.
Okay. Is that speaker here? Please, do you come forward?
Good morning, my name is Katie Wagner. I'm here, I'm representing my board, I don't have any mic or anyone else. First of all, I'd like to say that the, the letter that's currently in place, there, there are some amendments that need to be made. It does not offer enough protections for the monument. Mr. Worley, I'm going to ask you to recuse yourself from being a part of the decision to make amendments because of your connections to the Sierra Forest Service. In regards to the reduction of size from three hundred twenty-eight thousand acres down to ninety thousand acres, we know that that is addressed at the Kern County Board of Supervisors, it's not in your letter, but I'm asking you to include language in the letter that will explicitly try to protect the size of the letter, of the monument. What I want to address is, I urge you to define the term hazard tree. This term has been used by the logging industry to bypass laws protecting trees wider than thirty inches at breast height that are not permitted to be removed. By labeling these trees hazard trees, the logging industry has found a loophole to remove old growth trees that are vital to the ecosystem. This has happened in the Burton Timbercase, Saddlecase, Frog, White, and Ice Sales, and these were all in the region near Hume Lake, Grant Grove, outside Porterville, near the California Hot Springs. I urge you to recommend that the U.S. Forest Service provides the studies they are referring to for science-based actus, active forest management, that they will be transparent as to what their forest management approach will be and allow for public comment at the time that they plan to move forward in their, in their forest management programs. My concern is that the active management hazard tree removal is going to be used as a guise to log the monument and salvage roads. Wilderness protection is lost when roads are added. Once you put roads in there, they don't have the same protections anymore. Considering the Backcountry Access Act was put forward by our local senators McCarthy and Nunes, I'm concerned that these amendments, that this, what's happening now, is going to be used as a way to put roads in there, to open the mountains and the roads for industry so that they can get trucks through, to drive through, and that the, the threat of wildfire, the threat of dead trees is going to be used as this. To that end, I'm asking you to explicitly protect certain language in the proposition. I'm asking that you specifically say in your letter that the, that they keep the language. The federal land in interest in land reserve consistently, or I'm sorry, reserve consists of approximately three hundred twenty-seven thousand seven hundred sixty-nine acres, which is the smallest area compatible with the proper care and management of the objects to be protected as identified in the above preceding paragraphs. That's included in the proposition already. Include all federal lands and interest in lands within the boundaries of this monument are hereby appropriated and withdrawn from entry, location, selection, sale, leasing, or other disposition under the public land laws, including but not limited to withdrawal from locating entry and patent under the mining laws and from disposition under all laws relating to mineral geothermal leasing, and that no exchange further than the protective purposes of the monument. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have a request from Sophie Mulholland.
Good morning.
Hi, Sophie.
My name is Sophie Mulholland, and I'm representing Sequoia Riverlands Trust as well as a consortium. I did submit a letter, which I'm sure all of you have seen, so I'll make it really quick. I just want to commend you. I really was excited when I saw your letter and the position that you've taken. I absolutely agree that we need more funding in order to handle the, the problem that we have there, and that's where the city of Porterville actually, actually got to, and I was there when they changed their position on that. I think that these trees are iconic. They're the only place on the planet that they exist, and to shrink it, we don't even know what's going to happen with climate change. So to take this area and shrink it down really doesn't solve the problem. And the problem, as I know all of us realize, is that we are in a horrible mess right now with all of the fire potentials with the dead and dying trees. But remember that we do have the ability within the monument to actively manage it. It's completely written into the plan, and I submitted that. In addition to that, there, the mills, we have one mill left, and it's not taking any trees at all because they have more trees, they can't take anything after it's a year and a half old because it's non-salvageable at that point. Those are the trees that are dead and standing that are in our way. So I want, I promised to do this for Porterville. We've already gotten Save the Redwood Leagues and the Nature Conservancy and To Home Conservancy writing letters. We need money here. We need emergency funding to be able to do more work. It's very expensive, I know. The project that you just did up by Mountain Home cost a fortune just to go back ten feet, but we need funding. And I think that there are a lot of people in this community that would get behind a campaign to support your letter of giving additional help, and I just want to thank you very much for not taking a stand on reducing the monument at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have a request now from Wendy Reed.
My name is Wendy Reed. I'm with the Antelope Valley Conservancy. We preserve natural lands for wildlife and rare plants. Thank you, Chairman, and members of the board for taking comment and hearing us today. I'd like to speak very briefly, not about the technicalities of your letter, but about a concept that we have of sacrifice. There are dozens of people who have sacrificed their days today to come and make comment. There are hundreds of thousands of people across our nation this morning who got on their telephones, who got on their emails, who went ahead and tried to levy comment to protect the things that for decades our government has protected for us, including our national monuments. They have sacrificed their time to fight the cruel agenda of our current federal government to remove those protections, and they are willing to sacrifice our health. They are willing to sacrifice our children's health and future. They are willing to sacrifice the function of our ecosystem, the function of our oceans for lord knows what kind of profit or agenda there is in this. Mr. Zink is not the kind of Department of Interior Secretary we have ever had in the history of the United States of America, and I ask you to consider all American sacrifice, the sacrifice that any kind of industrial activity in the great Sequoia National Monuments would expose the people, not just of our own local community, but of our region, who are counting on these unique species to carry on into the future. Is that a sacrifice that we are really willing to make? And why would you, as individuals serving here in the public interest, consider such a sacrifice? It sounds to me, as though you have tremendous energy throughout this community to bring the resources and, and, and carry the banner to address the budget shortfalls and, and the shortcomings that our federal government is, is giving, to try to sacrifice our area for their agenda. So I ask you, please, recognize the community's sacrifices and don't sacrifice this. Thank you for your time today.[1797.12][1797.12](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. All right. That concludes the public comment period, and I will now bring it back to the board for discussion and/or action related to this item.
May I see my final minute to Mr. Arden?
There actually is no more time. You actually, I gave extra time compared to what we actually allotted in our agendas. My apologies.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Supervisors, this is now an item for our discussion and/or action.
Chairman, this, of course, has been a topic near and dear to my heart for many years, and it's no secret, I used to work in the timber industry and was involved in the mediated settlement agreement that was reached on the Sequoia National Forest back in 1988, I believe it was. The, it's interesting, at that time, the Audubon's, I'm sorry, well, all the environmental organizations, including the Sierra Club, thought that the sustainable yield on the Sequoia National Forest should be somewhere in the neighborhood of, I believe, 47 million board feet per year. And of course, in the last 20 years, I don't think they've, they don't think they've sold even 5 million board feet per year on average. I, I will say this. We have, we are living out the results of a passive management system today. And the drought that we've had and the insect infestation that we've had are natural phenomena, but something which has been left out has been the human engagement. Native Americans burned, it's anticipated they burned, or I think they, we believe they burned probably as much as 10% of the landscape every year to keep the vegetative growth removed and down. So they had the ability to travel, the ability to harvest the food that they needed, that sort of thing. And so we have moved, we did move and away from fires more to the use of chainsaws, but there were also fires involved in that. But when we look at what we have now, the overgrowth in the forest, it is massive. And the fires that have resulted from that overgrowth, and it's not just dead trees, it's just the amount of, of, of the trees that are there, the tonnage that's there, we see catastrophic results. I was just, if you've not been up to the Sierra Nevada in a while and seen all the mortality, it's really mind-blowing to see that in some cases on the western and southern slopes, 100% of the conifers are dead. And by the way, some of these are not just under 30 inches in diameter, there are some that are 40, 50, 60 inches in diameter, large trees that have been, have been felled by this, by this disease and by the result of the, of the insect infestation. So the, the, the problem is one that's such, and when I was there recently, I asked the Forest Service, we were not able to see them, but we did in the rough fire, which burned 156,000 acres, and a significant number of that was on the monument. We did lose monarchs. Those are what we call the really large trees. These are the redwoods that are, have withstood for sometimes 1,000, 2,000 or more years of droughts and fires and floods and whatever else that came their way, they've survived. They were destroyed in the rough fire. They died because of heat. Now, they're heat resistant, they're fire resistant trees, but they can't just take anything. When you have a fuel load like we have there, the burning was of such an intensity, it killed these trees outright. Now, when I look at the monument, it was created for the purpose of the protection and perpetuation of Giant Sequoia Groves. In my mind, I don't care what the, what the, the rule says of law that they're supposedly they can manage these groves, the fact of the matter is they're not. And they don't have the resource to do it. And we can, we can, we always go back to Washington, D.C., trying to get additional resources, but we always get the same response. Well, we, we have what we have, we don't have any more, and we're not going to get any more. With this tree mortality, I, I heard the regional forester say they reallocated, I believe the sum was $30 million, to deal with the mortality issue. As a result of that, on 8 million dead trees in the Sequoia National Forest, I think they said they have taken down under 100,000 trees. It's, it's the pittance. The, 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 the problem is such a magnitude, and the response has been so small as to be really insignificant. Now, I don't, I, I don't want to underestimate, I mean, I appreciate the fact that they're trying to be strategic about it, they're trying to do it in places where we have roads and improvements and so forth, they're trying to be protected. But the fact of the matter is, we have a problem out there which is immense. I, I know that people think that it's inappropriate for people to use chainsaws or to make a profit, but I, all I can tell you is that the only way this is going to really be addressed in terms of forest management is to engage the private sector. Because without that, we're not going to have enough federal dollars to do this. There is enough money in the National Treasury to do this. And so the idea that these were, these were deemed working forests. When they were created, the idea was they were, it was not like national parks. National parks were for purposes of protection and preservation. Forests were, were designed to be working forests. So that's why we allowed grazing, and we allowed mining, and we allowed logging. And the idea was that you didn't destroy this, you had a renewable resource, particularly when it came to logging and grazing, and that was the purpose of, of national forests being set aside. So when I look at the, the national monument and what its purposes were, they are not being met by the Forest Service, nor will they be, I'm, I'm convinced, under the current regime or the current laws and rules that we have. So I support this letter. We, we've got to get active management, and I'm convinced today, although it's not in the letter, I do think we need to include that we support the reducing of the size of the monument, just because I'm, I'm aware of the fact that the...
[laughter]
I, I, I know that's not popular among this crowd. I'm just telling you, I am also aware of, of, of circumstances that have led to less recreation on the national, on the monument, that a plan was designed to build, to build an entire train or trail system in the national monument that was done before the monument was created, it had gone through all the NEPA processes, it was ready to be signed and implemented, and once the monument was created, it just went away. It never happened. The access to, to these lands is actually being thwarted by the monument. The monument is not, is not doing what it was supposed to do. And, and so, as I said in my, as I've been, as I've been interviewed about this, to me, the key is, as was said by Sophie, we need active management. I'm only convinced today, as I'm looking, you know, into the situation, that leaving it as a national monument will only make it that much more difficult to engage in active management, which is what is necessary. By the way, not only is it necessary to protect the existing groves, but if you want to have regeneration of Giant Sequoia Groves, you have to go in and create openings. The National Park Service has known this for years. They've been doing active management with fire and creating openings, and when you do a sufficient amount of that, you can, you can get regeneration. But if you don't do anything, there is no regeneration. There is, there is only some old trees and the second growth trees that are there because of the logging that occurred 150 years ago. And one last thing. Sometimes I think people misunderstand that monuments are created out of public lands. There's a sense, I think, that some people think that a monument, that if we go out of monument status and go back to Forest Service, somehow the public is going to be, or, or that industry's going to move in there and start mowing down trees. These are public lands that have been protected, and they will be protected by the National Forest Service and by their general plans, and the plans that, that were mediated in 1988 set aside 19,000 acres, I believe it was, for the Giant Sequoia Groves. And then when President Bush came, he set aside an additional amount to make the 90,000 acres. There was really no scientific basis for the creation of this national monument size. What happened was that on the north of the Kern County line, the Forest Service took everything that was not already protected by wilderness designation, and by the way, the Sequoia was the most impacted national forest in the, in the country by wilderness designation. Everything that was not in wilderness designation was put into the monument. It had nothing to do with Giant Sequoia Grove, you know, investigations or the discussions about what was needed for the ecological needs of the Giant Sequoia Groves. It was just a land grab. So I support the letter, I support the fact that I think the board should go on record of supporting a reduction of the size of the monument, back to the 90,000 acres that President Bush suggested, which again exceeds the, 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 the groves themselves by about five times what they actually occupy. And I, I feel very strongly about this because I have seen what happens when we do nothing. When we do nothing, that, if you took people up today, and if you took them up there 15, 10 years ago, and they saw this beautiful green landscape, and they would say, "This is what I want. This is what I like. Don't touch it. Leave it alone. This is my idea of perfection." And you took them up there today, and you say, "Is this what you signed up for when all the tree, all the conifers on the western slope are dead? Would you sign, is this what you agreed, is this what you had in mind when you thought about this passive management system?" I think most people would say, "No. I didn't realize that. I didn't know that." We know what we need to do to properly manage these forests, and it's not being done. So that's why I support this letter.
Okay. Any other comments from any other supervisors? Supervisor Wardley?
Yeah, I would, I would coincide with Supervisor Worley. I have a place in the mountains, and let me tell you, they cancel my fire insurance every year because of this mess we've got up there. The very thing we've tried to protect by putting this in a monument, our big Sequoia redwoods, are in danger. Big time danger. When you talk to the Indian Reservation in Porterville, and you ask them, "What do you fear the most?", and they said, "The monument, because it surrounds us, and we got no control over it, there is no management whatsoever in it. It's just allowed to go..." It's like a person planting a beautiful yard and landscaping it and watering it. And then, "Oh, your neighbor says you can't trim that yard. You got to let it go. Let everything go." It's the same concept. No management. And not only in the monument, we have no management from the Forest Service, not only in California, throughout this nation. And we need to designate more money. And I'm willing to, I'm, we've been, we've been talking about that every time we go back there. How do we get more money to the Forest Service or the people that can manage these forests and not just let them go? Not just let them go. So I would also be in favor of, until they come up with a solution of how they're going to manage this monument to downsize it, I wouldn't be in agreement with that 100%.
Supervisor Crocker?
I think it's important that we add some type of paragraph or a few sentences to talk about the, how active forest management helps with, with water creation. I mean, we've talked about today, we've talked about the implications of the drought. We live in the, in the largest agricultural county in the, in the country, and we all know that active forest management creates additional water for not only our farms but our communities, and some of our poorest communities are relying upon this. So I would be in favor of, of adding that type of language.
Supervisor Chuckley?
Yeah, I would prefer with Supervisor Crocker. Just educational purposes, if, if the monument boundaries were reduced, Steve, would they be able to manage that 90,000 acres?
Well, they, they, if they did, they would be, they would be managed by the monument plan, so, which at this point has proven to be a lack of management.
Right.
Then they would be able to get back into hopefully active management on the areas outside of that as well. But there, I, make no, make no mistake, active management is needed within the groves to protect them and to perpetuate them. If you're going to have reproduction, you've got to be actively managing for that. That's not happening.
Yeah. Like I said, with Supervisor Crocker adding that, at this time, I would not, you know, be in, in support of, of asking for a reduction. At this time, at this time. But that's, that's not what we're, that's not what this letter is asking. So I, I support sending this letter in its current form with the addition of what Supervisor Crocker requested.
Okay. After hearing everyone's comments, I, just a couple of thoughts that I want to add. You know, I, I think that it, I agree with what Supervisor Crocker suggested that we add, but I also think it's important to, in reading through the letter in detail, we don't specifically mention the funding of the United States Forest Service. I think that's a very important aspect. Because this issue goes beyond just Tulare County and it's a nationwide issue, we need to make sure that there is adequate funding of the Forest Service to be able to achieve their mission. And that is obviously, like Supervisor Worley eloquently said, you know, if you look at the United States Forest Service, when you go back to Washington, D.C., you go and you meet within different departments, and you look at what, what department the Forest Service is located within, and what department is that again?
It's the United States Department of Agriculture. So they, they really, in founding our country and locating departments, they put the Forest Service within the United States Department of Agriculture for a reason, and it can be sustainably done so. And we have some great examples. This is really getting away from the subject matter of the, the letter today, but of what good, responsible forest management looks like. And if you go up and you look at Mountain Home State Demonstration Forest, which is run by our state government and is one of the very few things they actually do well, they manage that ecosystem, that landscape, very, very well, and it's healthy. You compare it to its adjoining partner, which is managed by our federal government, not so healthy. It's a bunch of dead trees. And you go up to what Southern California Edison has up in, what's that?
Big Creek.
Big, Big Creek, Shaver Lake, those different systems up there, a very healthy ecosystem. It's managed responsibly and actively. So, you know, I think it's very important to add the funding component, which we have always advocated for. Every time we are back in D.C., we advocate for increased funding of the United States Forest Service, one, from a law enforcement perspective, because we have many issues regarding the illegal growth of marijuana on our public lands here in Tulare County, and also we have now this tree mortality issue that we face as well. So given that this letter does not talk about the downsizing, which I don't think that that's what we need to discuss right now, we just need to advocate for the funding aspect and also advocate for the proper management of the forest system in general. And then I think that we can, you know, look at size, scope, et cetera, but not now, not today. That's not what this letter's about. I, I think that the message that's outlined in today's letter is, is very good, and I think it does send a message that will yield results for what we consider our, our public lands and our national treasures.
Any additional comment?
Steve, I saw you... Well, I, yeah, I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to, and I am going to, in my motion, I am going to include the language that was recommended by Supervisor Crocker and by yourself on the funding, but I also am going to recommend that a reduction of the size of this, of the...
[laughter]
And I will, I will tell you why, oh, I'm doing that. When we first were talking about this and it was reviewing it, it wasn't, the scope of it wasn't necessarily about reducing the size of a monument, it was about, do you have a monument, do you not have a monument? And, and I think this idea of reducing the size of the monument was something which came about later on, and frankly, I think it, it's, again, and with my experience, even right now, we deal with tree mortality. We know the difference, the way the Forest Service reacts on tree mortality with, with dead trees in the monument as opposed to those that are outside of it. Right now, they're not saying we can take any, any trees off the national monument, they have to be left there. And, you know, and then we have this problem. What do we do, what do we do with all these dead trees? So that's not, we've had difficulty getting these trees taken off of, off of the monument. So the, the idea here is that there is a difficult, it is difficult, it is more, going to be more difficult, I'm convinced, to do active management on the monument as long as we leave it all in monument status. And again, a big part of this that was set in monument status had no correlation to Giant Sequoias. It was just this, again, it was a geographic issue of acreage. So I, I, I still stand by that, I agree we should go back to the size of the monument as it was set aside, not as a monument, but set aside as protected by President Bush and back in 1990, I think it was, and that would be my motion.
Okay. So you, you are going to make the specific request that we deal with the size of the monument?
We support the reduction of the size of the monument to the size that was set out by, by President Bush in 1990.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments by board members about that?
That was a motion.
That was a motion. Okay. So we have a motion by Supervisor Worley, we have a second by Supervisor Ennis. Please vote.
Oh, I, what happened to mine? Oh, no's down there. Come on.
She's a no.
There. I'm a no.
All right. So yeah, the motion does, does pass three to two with Supervisors Crocker, Worley, and Ennis voting for, and Vanderpoel and Chuckley in against. And I just want to reiterate the, I don't know, because of some of the comments that were made, that there are no specific restrictions on the monument is the reason, if we knew for a fact that the land was completely constrained, that we would not be able to manage the forests on the monument, if I knew that for certain, I would have absolutely voted to support your motion. But because there is that uncertainty, I think that we have to primarily focus on the issue of forest management, not the designation of the size of the monument. I don't think that that's what we need to deal with right now. If we can get the Forest Service to deal with actively managing their ground, then I think we can address the size. And if we see that it is restricted to actually do anything or manage trees on the monument, I would absolutely support at that time downsizing of the monument, but that's not what we have for a SHRF thing today. So that's why I voted the way I did. All right. Thank you very much. We will now take up item number 48, which is a request from the Board of Supervisor's staff to approve sending a letter of opposition for SB 272. staff to approve sending a letter of opposition for SB 272. I'm sorry, man, we've concluded the public comment.
How many more need to be talked today about the monument?
Forty-eight. Forty-eight. Let's see, can I please have item 48 considered, which is a request from the Board of Supervisor's staff to approve sending a letter of opposition for SB 252. Go ahead, Denise.
Good morning.
Can I have Captain, Assistant Sheriff Sigley, would you please come forward and help some of these folks find the exit? This is inappropriate, go ahead.
Good morning Supervisor, County Council, CAO, Denise England, Water Resources Director for the Board of Supervisors. The matter before you today is regarding Senate Bill 252, which was authored by Senator Dodd. It is in regard to well applications and permits. As you may recall, several of you met with Senator Dodd in May when we were in Sacramento. The conversation was productive, however, the bill has passed out of the Senate and is being heard today in the Assembly Committee. The bill moves well permitting from a ministerial action to, I'm sorry, to a discretionary decision-making process, requiring a public hearing for each and every well permit application that comes forward. It requires some pretty onerous provisions, such as providing pumping capacity, acreage serve, pumping schedule, and annual extraction amounts on each and every well application. And while that information may appear on the surface to be helpful and useful, Tulare County currently has no way to evaluate that information, to determine whether or not the information is accurate, or if it's protective of other groundwater users. And it, we don't have a way to prove up whether or not it creates sustainable groundwater extraction. And so, a letter of opposition has been prepared, and I'm happy to take any comment or questions on the matter.
Any comments or questions?
I did have a question. I know that there was, I just got a word from CSAC staff that they had amended the bill significantly, so I don't know what the amendments did to it. Did you?
I have not seen the, I checked two days ago and it was still as it had been.
I think we should send this letter, one of the, when we met with the Senator, one of the things that was said to us was that, well, if you're doing a replacement well, which is probably 99% of the wells that we do in Tulare County, that there would, that there's an exception. But as I looked at the language that was set forth for the exception, was very inadequate. The biggest problem that I saw was that when someone replaces a well, they almost always are going to upgrade that well. So the capacity of well is going to be increased, it's going to be deeper, bigger, they're not irrigating more croplands, but I mean, you don't go back and replace a decrepit well with another decrepit well. You're going to go back and make an improvement. Well, that was not protected, that was not protected under the idea of what was a replacement well. So I think we need to go ahead with this letter of opposition. This is so unnecessary, we have Sigma, we've got the Sustainable Groundwater Act that's going to require us to manage our water table in the future, and this sort of thing is totally unnecessary. You could be putting in the biggest well in the world, but if you're only allowed to take so much water out, that's going to be your limitation under Sigma. So, this is an unnecessary bill, and I think we should oppose it.
Any additional comments?
No, I certainly agree with that, right in the middle of this groundwater sustainability program, which is going to handle most of the concerns. So, I think we need to send the letter.
Supervisor Crocker?
I just make a recommendation that we, whatever committee that it's being heard at, that we send all members of the committee, not just the chair. And then, kind of just regarding this item in particular, or kind of how this went about, the Water Commission, we discussed this item several months ago. And so, we had a lot of input from members as far as the need to have this opposed letter. And I'm just, you know, wondering, I know that other counties have a legislative committee that can specifically look at legislation on a regular basis as things come up, that might be something that we will want, yeah, the guy that sits on all the committees wants another committee. I know. I'm glutton for punishment. But I just, I think that might be something to explore. I don't know that we've had that many pieces of legislation that we've taken formal action on as a board, so it may not be necessary. But just for the purpose of expediting, if there was something of concern that had a certain timeframe, then that might help speed things along as far as getting a formal level of support or opposition. So I just bring that for consideration for the future, but other than that, I support the letter.
Any additional questions or comments? Any public comments related to this? Denise, did they actually pull back the language that noticing, the hearing, the entire public process that would be surrounding each and every?
Not on the version that I saw on Monday.
Okay, yeah. And that's really where I have issues too. You know, we've got an environment and a framework coming forward with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act that's going to address so many of these issues. This bill seems like it's really just going to address such a short period of time. But these onerous requirements of the bill, especially since non-replacement wasn't really specified in the bill, or replacement wells weren't so highlighted in the language, I just don't see this being necessary. And I think we do need to stand in opposition because this is a local land use matter, and we have a process in place that is based on sound science with our own groundwater, our own well ordinance, and then with the groundwater legislation and implementation that's coming. I think that's going to definitely address all the issues this bill seeks to, so I'm in support.
I would then move for approval of a letter of opposition for SB 252.
All right, we have a motion from Chuckley and a second from Ennis. Please vote. All right, the motion passes unanimously. Next, we're going to move on to item 49, which is a request to receive a report from the General Services Department regarding General Services Property Management Real Estate Program. And I could read as much as I did, because by the time the podium raised up to your height, John, it would have been perfect for you to speak. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Spada, Ms. Peterson. My name is John Hess, Deputy CEO for General Services and Capital Projects. Presentation presently will be about the Property Management Real Estate Program update. So I'll move, try and move as quickly as possible here. First, we'll go through a quick introduction about the presentation, look quickly at the Property Management Division, look at four different individual topics, specifically for vacant and underutilized properties, the four-story, which is the Visalia former courthouse in downtown Visalia, property acquisition process improvement, the Porterville Justice Partners, and then finish up with one slide on each of the lease management and the right-of-way component of property management. So very quickly, General Services, we presented a reorganization plan back in February of this year, which included the approval of a General Services Manager position. As part of that, it outlines five specific property management tasks, which we are going to provide updates on specifically this morning. So property management is broken into three different components, first being real estate, which is probably the largest component, that's the acquisition, development, disposition of county-owned properties, which the majority of the presentation today is going to be about that component. In addition, we also have lease management and right-of-way. So the updates that will be included in the real estate portion of this update are, first, the evaluation of vacant or underutilized properties for development, retention, or disposition in order to maximize the public value of those properties. Second is to review the proposed development strategy for the former Visalia courthouse, which I'm going to refer to most likely as the four-story in this presentation. Three, review the county's property acquisition process. And then, fourth, identify long-term solutions for future office space needs in Porterville to provide legal services to the new state courthouse that opened up a few years ago there. So the first component, as mentioned, is the vacant or underutilized properties. The county owns a variety of properties, the majority of which are utilized for their intended purposes, which is direct government services, included some roads, rights of ways, which are not generally usable for other purposes. We have over 300 parcels, which encompasses 100 facilities, so obviously, there are some facilities that are on multiple parcels, and that's how that works. What we'll talk about specifically is how the revenues that are generated from leased facilities, that is, county-owned facilities to leased entities, do not presently cover the losses from operating, maintaining those facilities that the county owns that are vacant. So as we go through these vacant or underutilized properties, the underlying premise is either dispose, retain, or in some way maximize the utilization of those properties to create greater value, to cover our vacant operation costs for our properties, much like a property management firm would do with their portfolio. So what this table is here is a summary of the net operating income excluding the Cigna property, because that's such a large operating income entity there. And this goes back five or six years, six or seven years. The first or the second column is the leased facilities net operating income. You can see it's declined over years. Part of that is a result of the Tulare County Office of Education moving out of the two facilities here. They were rent-paying at quite a bit of money every year. And what that means is those properties rolled onto the vacant facility. So all the cost of operating utilities, grounds, maintenance, all of those rolled onto the vacant. So there's a direct correlation between those two activities, and that is summarized on the far right. In addition, presently this year, we have some under collection of rents in the, at this time, from some of our leased partners. So here are three of the buildings that we are evaluating as our prime targets of cost centers for vacancies. And these are the first ones, after evaluating all of the vacant buildings, that we would like to strategically address first. And the first two are discussed in more length throughout this presentation. First is the four-story building, it's vacant, it's downtown, has potential for mixed-use opportunities there. As we'll discuss, I'm recommending obtaining development proposals. Second is the former Porterville Superior Court. We have an equity share with the state that was established several years ago through legislation. That building is currently vacant, at least the majority of it is. It has the potential for renovation and reuse for county space needs. Our recommendation, as discussed further, as part of the Porterville Justice Partners slides, will be to obtain cost estimate updates for that property. And look at additional property to satisfy our needs on the long term there. Third is similar, all three of these, incidentally, are all former courthouses that the county has ownership of, is the former Tulare-Pixley Superior Court in the city of Tulare, vacant building. We have not identified a use for that building at this time, so our recommendation would be to conduct further analysis to either see if there's a marketability of that property, if there's what the cost of renovating that property would be, just really begin the process of thoroughly analyzing that property.
John, before you leave that, so when you look at the losses that we're now suffering, how much of these represent that? Do we know that?
These are the three largest vacant properties we have. So those would easily be over 50% of our vacancy costs, if not even significantly more than that, on the vacancy column. Now, underutilized properties, these properties that are not presently, they don't have a structure on them that could be utilized for maximized public value, is first, the parking areas of the Tulare Acres Professional Center, there's development opportunity there. We've only really had one interest in that that's reached out to us, and so wanted to bring that to the board as an opportunity. We are significantly overparked, as they would say, for that property. And so there's the opportunity to utilize a portion of the property on the north end, so wanted to include that in our evaluation and seek any comments regarding that potential. Second, farming areas around Government Plaza, approximately 15 to 20 acres, most of which is under farm lease, a lot of which we would recommend to be renegotiated. Those farm leases are several years old, and we need to be renegotiated to current market rates. In addition, those have the opportunity to be disposed of or developed as the board would see fit for that maximized use. Finally, the Harmon Field, just as an update there, this is again, one of our largest properties with major potential at this time. We're not recommending anything at this moment. We have to finish up doing what's called an operation and maintenance agreement and deed restrictions with the State of California Department of Toxic Substances Control after we've completed remediation, so we're still working through that process, and that'll be complete in the future. But those are the three most prime for future development. So now, about the four-story specifically, it's, as mentioned, it's a financial burden and a liability because it is vacant and sort of an attractive nuisance being vacant as it is now. It's been vacant for over a decade. The county was the last occupant of that building. I believe the Child Welfare Services was in that building. It was constructed in 1934 as an ancillary building to the old courthouse, the 1880s courthouse, which I have some images on of that. And it was used for a brief period of time while that courthouse was demolished, and the courthouse now here on Burl was constructed for that purpose. It truly has historic value for the community. Because of its vacancy, it is a significant target for vandalism. Visalia Pedia is very good with us on dealing with that and addressing that for us. Because of its size, because of its location, for a variety of different things, we are recommending to obtain and seek development proposals for that property. We have in the last six months seen significant interest in development opportunities for that property, has grown substantially. So really, the timing is right, and we really think it's a good opportunity to capitalize and take advantage on that interest. So regarding that proposed RFP, we have evaluated a variety of other RFPs for historic downtown mixed-use facilities. And in addition to the standard RFP language, these are some specifics that would be recommended for this particular property, given its unique characteristic. First, would be preserving the historic value, that we'd want to see whatever the proposed development would include something with respect to protecting and honoring the historic value. And I have a couple images that, some ideas along those lines. Second, entire building development, we'd like to see them develop the entire building, not just one or two floors. That would be a difficult scenario for the county to then come back and make the other floors usable. Third, along those same lines, we'd want to see the enumeration of their development plan for the entire property and the site, including historic feature protection, what they're going to do for parking, lighting, landscaping, those sorts of things. Financial strategy and disposition strategy, of course. And there's a different, there's a variety of arrangements that can be used for this purpose. County retains, the ownership leases it to a private developer, private developer purchases it outright from us. There's a variety of opportunities there, and so we can seek direction from the board on that matter. And then, of course, past completed projects with an emphasis on historic downtown mixed-use developments, and particularly in Tulare County. So here's an aerial shot of the two, you can see the building on the left, the taller building is the current four-story building, the wider building is the probation building. It was renovated several years ago, maybe about seven, eight years ago. And they do adjoin each other. They are physically adjoined through a hallway and through a corner there. And so that is part of the consideration with a development proposal, will need to be how that is resolved, if at all. As a note, we own the parking lot to the north across the street there, which is very helpful with respect to marketing and developing this property.
Yeah, I was going to make sure we included that in our proposal.
That would be included in the?
Yes. I think because of the square footage of this property, we would, I think, need that to satisfy our requirements. So as mentioned, here's some historical images that I thought were helpful in respect to providing context for the value of the property. The building here is the historic, the 1880s building, which is similar to courthouses in Kings County and in Central Valley. If you, and then very quickly, the picture on the right is when that building was being demolished in the 50s after the Tehachapi earthquake, earthquake damaged that building. You'll see on the left, kind of on the left of that crane, there's a column and some, that's where it adjoins the existing courthouse. So when you go to the existing courthouse, there's a big column on the rear, that's that column that used to physically, they used to be able to walk between them. One note, if you look at the dome on top of the courthouse, you'll see a statue there of Minerva, who's on the seal of the State of California. She, that statue is still on, it's in display actually at the Tulare County Museum. And so, for example, that's an opportunity to honor some of the historic value of the courthouse square that could be incorporated into the lobby or somewhere in the fixtures of the four-story. So here's two buildings, on the left is historic building, or a historic picture of the same building, and on the right is a present-day building. So to summarize the four-story component, if approved, staff will prepare and return with a draft RFP probably 30 to 60 days from now, and then at that time enumerate the very specific outline requirements and criteria for consideration of that RFP. The respondents, what we're proposing is either schedule at the time we release the RFP, have it scheduled at a standard board meeting, or maybe as an independent board meeting for the respondents to propose their development to the board, so they can be seen and reviewed in concert here. Okay. So now on to the Porterville Justice Partners. So switching gears, the county provides legal services to the new Porterville courthouse, which is open by the state several years ago. Beautiful building, large building, they relocated from the building we actually own in equity share with them on Morton Street. Some of the departments that are involved there are the district attorney, public defender, probation, and county council. At this time, five of the nine courtrooms are operational. We've been, we do not have a specific plan from the State of California as to when they're going to be opening those additional courtrooms up. As they do, that will increase the necessary services that we provide to the courthouse. We leased a facility from Sierra View beginning in 2013 where we're still housed, at least for the district attorney and the public defender. And the former courthouse on Morton Street is vacant, as mentioned in a prior slide. As I've indicated, additional office space will be needed as the state courthouse becomes fully operational over their window of five, 10, perhaps even 20 years. So because of, and this is, there's a lot of very individual complexities to this particular matter, we are first recommending obtaining cost estimates to renovate the Morton Street building. It's in poor condition, it's primarily vacant, there's a part of it that's used for a holding cell and substation for the sheriff's office. At the time that the legislation was passed, transferring some of the equity share between the state and the county, an architect provided a cost estimate of one and a half million, that was about four years ago. And in addition to that, the equity share would require a payment to the state of $400,000 if we wanted to outright use it. So the renovation and the equity share payment of that, to utilize that entire property could be north of $2 million.
Real quickly, since they have an equity interest, do they also share in the cost of these facilities in terms of the vacancy costs that we incur?
Yes, there is a, there's a financial arrangement between us for distributing those costs between the two entities.
So it's costing not only the county of Tulare, but it's also costing the State of California these dollars for? of California these dollars for vacancies.
Correct. At both the Porterville building and the Tulare-Pixley building, for whatever reason, they were arranged separately where we bill them in one instance and they bill us in a separate instance, for two different buildings for some reason, when it was originally established. So, that's not something that's needed. The Porterville Justice Partner is not needed in the next three-year window. It's more of a five, 10-year window. So, the evaluation is something that we would want to begin and see if we can start programming it in future years. As mentioned here under item two, kind of a simultaneous or concurrent recommendation would be explore the possible costs of partnering with a developer in town. We have seen some interest with that regard. And the, to that point, the Morton Street building will not satisfy the long-term window of the staffing for these facilities. The Morton Street building is about 14,000 square feet. We will need upwards of 20,000, so it will be insufficient for our needs. Plus, there's parking limitations and some other location limitations there. Currently, our lease with Sierra Views on a month-to-month status. And so, we would recommend evaluating proposed terms of another property, what that would look like rental versus ownership, monthly payments along those lines, and then returning with a more thorough, precise analysis for that. Moving quickly on to the property acquisition process improvement, the county buys buildings and properties on an infrequent basis to expand our programs into new locations or to provide for office space to county's growing workforce, as we just discussed in Porterville. In the last five years, we've acquired six properties, the largest of which being the Cigna, the Tulare-Agers Professional Center. And so, what we're doing in order to ensure that the process of buying property, which is not as common as we perhaps may have thought, is thorough and fully accommodating not only comments from the board, from the public, we've created a public, an outreach checklist. And what that checklist does is it accommodates the essential requirements in government code, allows for greater review by the board supervisors through a proposed ad hoc committee, and the creation of a forum for public outreach process. So, two primary modifications are first, that ad hoc committee and development of an outreach plan. The outreach plan has eight steps, integrating a three-phase outreach strategy. And that would be used at the discretion of the ad hoc committee when there is a sense that this particular property purchase needs more investigation. Not every property purchase is the same. And so, this would be implemented and called into action when necessary.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm chairman. He's not here. I guess, when you think about buying real property, a lot of times you do it in a way, there is a concern about making too much of a public process because obviously, the county wants to get a good deal on a purchase. And the more you get into this, you might actually create a situation where the cost goes up while you're going through this long process to determine how, how much the county needs it. I mean, is there a way of dealing with that particular issue? Is that why it's discretionary in case, in case we choose not to go through the process? I mean, I'm just a little concerned about that.
Correct. And we had extensive conversation about that particular matter, which is to say that if the county makes perhaps a lot of public overture with respect to wanting to buy a property, does that then artificially drive the property value of that, of that purchase up? We think we can accommodate that through the due diligence process. Rather than having it done prior to engaging, it's, it would be simultaneous to the negotiations of the property, contingent upon public outreach, environmental, building inspection, appraisal, all of those things.
Just part of the due diligence process.
Correct. And so, it would accommodate that in that case. So, very quickly, I'll go through that and it includes that discussion. First is the initial request. The department submits their request to property management, who assesses it, compiles it, brings it to the first ad hoc committee, and the ad hoc committee establishes the parameters for that particular purchase. Third, property management conducts, in combination with the department, a property search, just looks around for those properties that meet the parameters. Fourth, they bring those properties, maybe two, three, five, however many are resulted from that search, to the ad hoc committee. Ad hoc committee provides some feedback with respect to that. At that time, there's also an enumeration of the outreach plan. And so, the ad hoc committee has the opportunity to say, yes, we think it's, there's wisdom in this case to do it, or no, it's not necessary in this case. At which point, if, as approved, it would go to the first formal action, which is done in closed session, where real property negotiations are occurred for the first instance. And all of that would be enumerated, including the outreach plan. Number six, that would be what we just discussed, the due diligence process, where the outreach plan is initiated and put into action at the same time all of the other due diligence matters are taken care of. Number seven, which is the, these two items, seven and eight, are government code required, notice of intent to purchase, and that's put on the agenda. And then, number eight, consummate the property purchase as well. So, also, part of the wisdom is prior to coming to a first public board action, the outreach property, the outreach strategy has concluded. So, those comments have been done and so they're incorporated into the recommendation to purchase the property. So, that is the end of the real estate program. I'll do very quickly on the lease management and the right-of-way program. Leases, as we say, we have leases with private landlords, as well as, meaning we lease from private landlords, as well as we lease to private entities. These are governed by administrative regulation number 35. We are not recommending any changes to that administrative regulation at this time. The primary piece of information from that regulation is that subvented departments are recommended to be in leased facilities, while general fund departments are restricted from being in leased unless there's an extenuating circumstance. So, one such instance of one of those circumstances that we are being, that we are addressing and resolving is that of the fire department's lease in Farmersville. They are going to be relocating in a few months, as I'll show in the next presentation, to the Cigna property. And Health and Human Services, which is a subvented program, will then take over the lease on that property, and that's consistent with AR number 35.
Mr. Chairman, I think the language there should be, should as opposed to sort of mandatory shall with exceptions. Because, I mean, we understand the concept, trying to use subvented funds for leased facilities where it's paid by the larger public versus our general fund. But because we have exceptions at all the time, I mean, like, it just happens. So, when you have to, instead of having to go back and find another, make another exception to the rule, it should just be not mandatory, it ought to be just should or may or something like that.
All right. So, I think that concludes that slide, yes. Right-of-way program, that's the third component of the property management division. And that is assisting solely the resource managing agency in their expansion of transportation and roads and bridge infrastructure projects, with the emphasis on economic development and commercial opportunities therein. We have one property specialist who's dedicated solely to that function. And as I think the board is well aware, RMA has been very ambitious with respect to increasing their roads and bridge infrastructure program. And so, the workload has grown over at property management. Our staffing has not increased during that time, so we have a little bit of a workflow compaction, which we're doing some analyses to try and address. No requested action at this time, just wanted to complete the presentation by including that last component there. So, in conclusion, the formal requested action would be to receive this presentation regarding the real estate program, authorize staff to prepare the RFP for the four-story, and to pursue recommended options for the other vacant or underutilized facilities that were listed on there, the other five, including the Porterville Justice Partners. Approve the property acquisition checklist to improve the process of purchasing, purchasing properties for county programs. And four, authorize staff to obtain further information regarding the Porterville Justice Partners as presented to fulfill the county's future property needs. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
One question that I had, John, was related to the real estate program. Request number three, to approve the property acquisition checklist. We got to be real careful with that because the second that anybody knows that the county is looking for a property...
You missed that conversation.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed it. I just, we've got to avoid that and be very careful. So, I don't know that I'm ready to approve this right now without maybe further discussing a checklist, maybe at the ad hoc committee level first. And then, making recommendations to bring back to the board. I think we already have that system set up and that might be an appropriate way of doing this. Just because I think we can be a little more creative and think about that so that we get the best bang for every dollar that we do have to expend upon a new facility and that we're not put in a situation where we incur overly exorbitant costs.
Mr. Chairman, we just had that conversation and I think the response was a good one, which is they're talking about that being in the due diligence process. So, it'd actually be after you've already entered into agreement to purchase the property.
Okay, okay.
So, I think it does deal with that issue adequately because I raised that same concern.
Okay, yeah, and we might, we still may even want to discuss this at the ad hoc committee and then bring that, that specific aspect of this back to the board for formal action at a later date.
Sure.
That's what I would request. Supervisor Crocker.
Just on that point, there is a checklist that was provided that goes out through the process. And I think, because I met with John and we had quite a bit of different discussions over that. And I think, from my perspective, the idea was to have a process that was more encompassing of the public, but it didn't stop us from doing the job that we need to do, that we can still perform the services and to be able to do business as we're tasked to do, but that we have the ability to seek input. And I, and I think that the checklist also specifies that it would not necessarily be for every property, but there would be certain triggers that would, that would then signal outreach mechanisms, whether or not it's a new landfill or something that we're probably going to do anyway. And so, really, essentially, the idea is, is that it's more of a codifying, maybe that's the wrong word, but, but we are, we are listing out best practices that are already implemented. And so, it's not necessarily that we're doing anything over and above that's, that would be more, more strenuous on staff and that would limit our flexibility to be able to do what we need to do. But it would be a matter of, you know, just allowing for more engagement on certain specific project, you know, potential buildings or facilities, parcels, that the, that an ad hoc committee would then, would review and look at, whether or not that's separate or if it would go towards the space planning, you know, ad hoc or whatever. But I, I'm, I'm comfortable with the process, but if we need to have further review, then I'm happy to do that. On a separate note, as far as the four-story is concerned, you know, I know that we're looking at, one of the things it talked about possibly development, but there wasn't any indication that we have any need for that facility. So, if we are talking about developing it, essentially, we are then becoming competitors with the private sector as far as, in, as far as being a landlord. And I know that we've done that in the past, but we've always had a use for the facility as well, where we're utilizing it for our own internal purposes as well, with the idea in the future that we would need the entire facility or a greater portion of it. And so, I, I would like that a part of our due diligence to make sure that we include that, and I think you mentioned that already, that we look at what the, the opportunities are to, if we don't find value in it, then to just sell off the property.
I believe as part of the government code process of seeking developers, we have to declare a surplus to our needs in order to, if we're going to do a full disposition of that property. So, that would be included as part of that analysis as well.
Supervisor Worthley.
John, do you know, is it possible to parcel that, that property off from the rest of, because I mean, we do need, we do need some of that property, but we don't necessarily need that particular structure. Is there the possibility of actually doing a lot line adjustment or a lot split, lot split there?
Definitely. We could do a parcelization, lot line adjustment, whatever, variety of what that would look like. Of course, we'd want to make sure we were going to do an underground investigation for all of the utilities because there's going to be shared utilities on the site. So, we have to do some sort of...
Going to the, I mean, I think, as I look at this, it's not that I want the county to own this building and operate it. I'm looking at giving, you know, make sure we get it to somebody else and it's off of our backs. My main thing was when you pointed out to me that we're, you know, what brought this up in my conversation with John was I said, what do you do with all this other revenue? I know we've got 80 acres down there south of our Government Plaza property. I said, and that's generating revenue, where's that money go? Well, then he said, well, actually, it goes to pay for all these expenses on this vacant property and we're, we're in the hole. That was kind of a shock to me to know that. And so, I say that from a sense of urgency. I don't want to spend a whole lot of time exploring the Porterville building if it's costing us a bunch of money to maintain that. Sell it as-is, blow it up, do something, cut those costs. Because, I mean, I don't want us to keep spending money on vacant facilities and studying them until, you know, meantime, it's leaking, it's costing us money. It'd be one thing if they sat there and didn't cost us anything, but if there's an expense involved with that, we got to move these things along sooner rather than later.
Yeah, one of the concerns at the Porterville thing is kind of that good money after bad situation where we could invest $2 million, let's say, to renovate it and buy the state out of their equity share. And then, that's, it's made a space available for us, but that space is still not necessarily directly satisfactory for us.
Well, also, I think eventually, we want to move that substation...
Yes.
...out by the jail. So, that would free that whole block up actually for development.
Mm-hmm.
And my view on the four-story, it's cost prohibitive. Cost prohibitive to even try to do anything with it.
I agree.
And of course, you know how I feel about the four-story. I think it's been an ISO in the downtown for a long time and we have a lot of interest. I've had at least four people contact me about what's going to happen with it, let them know we were talking about it today. I like, I like the RFP for, you know, having a set out, you know, we want to keep, we don't want somebody to buy it and change the whole facade or knock it down or anything like that. We want to keep, and I think a lot of folks want to keep that historical value of the building. And I think the private sector can do it much, much better than we can. Now, did we have anywhere like a price? Are they going to be submitting any kind of bids or anything or what, where is that in the process?
So, in their, in the criteria, they would have to provide the financial strategy for that development. Because there's going to be obviously a price point for them, as it is, it is a market analysis for them as well. So, that would be something we would have them independently do and provide to us and we could utilize as part of our criteria for analyzing which is the most preferable respondent to us. Depending, for example, there could be various different financial arrangements with the county that might be of better or less benefit to us.
Yeah, because I think what we need to remember right now, it's, it's not getting us anything. It's costing us, once it's developed, there, you know, we have an increased property tax value, we have increased sales tax, all of that on that building. So, I think if, in our mind that, you know, we're, you know, it's worth this much, it's not really worth anything right now.
The liability, the cost.
I mean, we're not going to sell it for a dollar certainly, like some people want us to, but it's not worth anything right now.
And I know that my opinion's going to be different than my colleagues, but I do see, first of all, I think this program that you've outlined is going to be very good for the county. We need to be looking at this on a regular basis. And back on your chart where you show the NOI, you know, we should have been on this a couple of years ago when we first started going negative on the total cost overall of our leases that we have out there. But I'm glad that we really caught it before it got too bad, the bleeding got too bad. But I really think that the four-story, that there's an opportunity there to create ongoing revenue for the county in a collaboration or partnership with the developer. But that remains to be seen when the RFP process goes forward. You know, I think there's, there's potential. We have a need clearly, as Steve talked about with the probation department right there adjacent, but I think there's tremendous potential and I agree with Supervisor Shuckland, the private side can do it better. I wouldn't suggest that the county get into the development business, but in terms of the county owning and doing a long-term lease or lease purchase, something like that, I think that's a real opportunity for us there too. But that concludes my comments. Are there any public comments related to this item? Are you interested in the four-story?
No, thank you.
Okay.
I'm Rita Woodard. I'm the Tulare County Auditor Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector. And John brought up that there was a statue saved from the old courthouse when it was torn down. Just for information, historical information, there were other items also saved from the old courthouse. And there happens to be one that was installed in the new courthouse. And that is the vault door.
Vault door, uh-huh.
And it is one huge vault door. It's not like we can buy, you can't buy another one like it. It's got dual combinations, dual, it's eight to 10 inches thick. It is brass in the inside and ornately engraved. It's tarnished now and the Historical Society said, don't clean it, you'll end up with no brass, to leave it like that. Every once in a while, we give a tour. Tulare leadership came through last time. It's a small space because the door is so big, it opens up into that room, takes room up. We have a desk and a person working there because we do need more space too. But we let them in three or four at a time to look at it and it's quite impressive. But there were items that were saved and I like the historical aspect of things when it comes around. It's one of my hobbies. So, thank you.
Thanks for the comment, Rita. Uh, any additional public comments? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for action, and I would just, I know Supervisor Crocker has spent some time on, uh, that item, but I do think that we can bring the, that real estate checklist to the ad hoc committee and then bring that back to the board at a later date, I'd like to have a little bit more review on that, if you would include that in any motion. I'm open, the chair will entertain a motion at this point in time.
Uh, move to approve with, uh, the checklist coming back, uh, at a later date, the item.
All right, great, I have a motion by Supervisor Crocker, a second by Supervisor Shuckling, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Chairman, before John leaves, one, if I might just say, you had raised a point about development on the Acres property as far as that parking lot, and, you know, real estate being the way that it is in terms of time-sensitive, sometimes properties are hot, sometimes they're not, I look at the new hotel being built over there, lots of activity along Acres, um, uh, I think we should push forward with looking at, if the board agrees with me, to look at options to try to get some development in, and I also concur with something our chairman said earlier, which is not about selling, but rather about making a profitable income, because you could have a long-term lease with a fast food restaurant, something like that, and provide revenue back to the county, along with that which comes from the Acres property.
Very good.
Okay, wonderful, thank you very much, we will now continue, continue on, uh, with the next item that John is, uh, going to be responsible for, that's item number 50, Proven Amendment with, uh, to Agreement Number 27894 with Forkham Mackey, Inc. Go ahead, John.
Yes, Candace, if you could. So, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Spott, Ms. Peterson. So this item is the Countywide Space Improvement and Relocation Project, um, we'll go over Phase One and Phase Two very briefly, uh, for Phase One, it is Human Resources and Development, County Council, Sheriff's Office, Fire Department, Emergency Operations Center, uh, HRD is in construction, Council will begin after HRD, and the other three, Sheriff, Fire, and EOC, are all in construction over at the Signa property. Phase Two includes the Health and Human Services Agency, Information and Communications Technology Department, both of which will be located prospectively at Government Plaza, and then General Services and Capital Projects, which will be here at the Office of Education Building. So, Phase One, project design architect, as well as Phase Two, the architect of record is DKJ Architects here in Visalia. The design documents were approved by the board for Phase One in September, the, and we went out to bid, advertised it, obtained a few bids, and, uh, the construction contract was awarded to Forkham Mackey in November of that year, if, if you recall, Forkham Mackey was the only entity that responded to all three packages together, and the original construction amount was $3,117,000 for those Council, HRD, Sheriff, Fire included, and actually, here's a table that reflects that, you can see in the second column, the construction contract, 618 for HRD, 879 for Council, and $1,620 for Sheriff, Fire, EOC was not originally part of that, bringing us to a total of $3,117. The prior change orders, which were approved in February, were 64,000, and the current proposed change orders are significant, and they are 845,000, split about a third among the three projects in construction right now.
I think the only project I'm happy with is County Council.
And they're not in construction yet, so.
That's why I'm happy with it, there's been no cost increase, come on.
So, specifically about those proposed change order detail, the Sheriff and Fire, 330,000, about 80% of it has to do with electrical work, including some charging stations, door security, which was extensive, and then carpet repair and replacement, which was also extensive. Emergency Operations Center was a, a fully new part of the project, so that was a whole new cost for us, about $226,000 there, and then at Human Resources, about 288,000 total, about, the 200,000 of that is due to the access ramp on the exterior, exterior, the remainder had to do with finishes and window tinting. So the change orders were approved previously back in February, so these change orders now include, uh, construction from March, April, May, and now June. So the proposed change orders do not delay the project, they, uh, will still be complete in June, actually, this week for HR, and they'll be relocating next week, Sheriff, Fire, EOC still to be complete in August, and relocation in September. So here's some interior pictures before the construction was done in HRD's facility. On the top left, you see the lobby before we did the construction there, on the top right, that was, uh, there was this demising wall in between this, this room here, and we put in a permanent wall and created a, a break room on the back of that, and a conference room on the front of that. The bottom two pictures show the planetarium, the entrance to the planetarium, and the actual planetarium during early demolition. These pictures show the current, uh, condition of the property, on the top left, you'll see the exterior's been painted, windows have been tinted, we'll talk about the, the ramp that was installed, and then on the top right, that's the break room, uh, new flooring, new furnishings, paint, uh, on the bottom left, that's the, you'll see the wall that's on the right of that picture, that is the wall that we constructed to separate the break room and that conference room, as shown, and the bottom right picture is a sample of some of the cubicle constru-, uh, furnishers, furniture that we put into the building, and we furnished the, the entire building through the project.
John, what, what color is that, uh, the exterior of the building?
The exterior, I, the interior is rocket red, is my understanding.
That's right, it's rocket red.
Yeah, I'm not, I think it's a version of that, I think they, DKJ added some, some darker tones to mute it a little bit.
Was that your choice?
No, that's Rhonda, that's all Rhonda.
So regarding the schedule, HRD, as I say, as I, they are at the end of construction, really, there's, uh, finishes just happening this week, with relocation occurring next week, Sheriff and Fire will be complete in August, and we can do, there's a, that's a much, much larger project, that's the largest project we have at this time, and so we can move and, uh, install 100 cubicles at a time, so that'll take four weeks, 400 cubicles, 400 installations throughout the, the month of September, so by the end of September, they'll be fully operational. County Council will begin one week after HRD is completed, that's when the notice of proceed will be issued for their project, and they're on track to be completed by the end of this calendar year. So here is, uh, some images that we have regarding a proposed mural for the front, the ADA access wall was installed by Forkham Mackey, and it did change the facade of the property, and in order to kind of beautify that facade and make a little bit more of an attractive entrance, we've worked with the department, a local muralist, to develop some, uh, renderings, and we've come up with this rendering here, uh, regarding, uh, putting on the front of the, of the facility, I don't know if Rhonda would like to speak to it, but it, it shows kind of, it's almost a microcosm of the Tullary County seal, you'll see, you know, we'd have the, the mountainous areas, we have, uh, vineyards, we have a cana-, you know, a waterway, we have the citrus groves, and then of course, dairy, so tried to reflect as much of Tullary County as possible. Uh, the muralist is, uh, very, very familiar with the area, she's done the stuff in downtown Visalia, downtown Exeter, Colleen Vana, Mitchell Vana's her name.
Very good.
Great work, um, and very, very, uh, affordable pricing for us in this.
I'm just really glad that you took Shuckling's picture out of the middle, middle of the meadow like she wanted, that's, uh, really great, because I know that was in the original rendition that I saw, so I'm real glad to see that.
But we got your picture up on the far right there.
Go ahead, go ahead, continue.
So, um, with your approval, we, we would like to move forward with this mural, it is, it would be sort of a first of its kind, and a way to do some, uh, something different with our exterior of the, of the county properties. Attractive building with the new colors, with the new window tints, a lot of, um, a lot of focal point made there at the front of the county complex, so we wanted to bring that to you, as it is something a little bit creative for us to consider for this property, and wanted to see, uh, your approval.
There's no cat in that? I can't see.
Really small somewhere.
Is there a cat running up the redwoods or something, or?
It's in the vines.
All right.
All right, carry on, John.
Okay. So regarding Phase Two, very quickly, we are still in design, we're at the very, very tail end of design, and those documents have been given to us, uh, last week or the week before, so the, all the entities that are impacted are reviewing them, and there's still some, some work that needs to be completed on that, our projection is to bring them to the board July 18th, but that will be contingent upon how thoroughly complete those plans are, we want to make sure that they are 100% plans before we bring them and release them, which is something we learned from Phase One. So regarding bid and award, that, as soon as we bring it forward, we would advertise the project and have the bid opening in August, and then for construction, with, the contract will be awarded in September, with construction beginning in September, part of the, uh, wisdom of that is, particularly at Government Plaza, the Sheriff's Office is occupying an area that's going to be improved, and an area that's going to be needed for the temporary staging, so they'll need to relocate in order for us to begin the Government Plaza, and there's a, there's a variety of other internal logistics that need to be completed before we move on to the construction of Phase Two. So, if all of those fall into place appropriately, General Services will be fully operational on March 1st, and they, that, our department is not contingent upon another department vacating, it's, it's, uh, right there, available for us to begin construction once under contract, and then Government Plaza would be fully operational beginning in June of next year. Here's a quick look at the current budget, projected budget for Phase Two, Government Plaza and General Services, shown here, the construction combination is about four and a half million dollars, furniture's about $2 million, and we've been getting very good pricing on the furniture through Phase One, miscellaneous costs of 672, those are IT, um, data installation, the actual physical relocation, and particularly for HHSA, the temporary staging costs of improving their temporary staging area, relocating in and out several times, and that obviously gets costly, and then a contingency factor, we're carrying about $700,000 in contingency for change orders and things of that nature as we proceed, and then finally, the total cost is about 7.75 million dollars, the 6.7, or 6.8 million dollars of Government Plaza will be fully funded through HHSA, and their, and their costs will be fully reimbursed. For General Services, the approximately $1 million or 962,000 will be reimbursed through the current funding for the project, so there's no need for additional funding at this time for this. Okay, so in conclusion, we.
So, real quick, before you get into the, uh, actual verbiage here, what is the, uh, overall money between Phase One and Phase Two that the county is expending that is a cost above what any other private business would be spending, that can be attributed to prevailing wage? I just want to put that out there, as a, as a percentage, or a dollar amount, of what we are paying overall for county construction.
So if you take this four and a half million dollar construct, construction projected costs, plus the $4 million construction costs over on Phase One, and that doesn't include some separate work we're doing, including roofs, HVACs, things of that nature, so you could easily roll up into the $9 million territory, typically prevailing wage is about a third, so we are in the $3 million territory for just prevailing wage.
Over and above what you normally would.
Correct, if we were to just as a private entity, do that same construction renovation, it would be.
I think that's just important to point out, uh, in looking at our overall costs that we're expending upon our facilities.
So now the.
Good news is, the buildings were built without prevailing wage, so we're talking about the remodeling costs, as opposed to building something brand new.
Yep. So the first requested action is to approve the proposed change orders in the amount of 845, and the, uh, associated project days, and second, approve the transfer of funds for the necessary budget adjustments from the Health and Human Services Agency to Capital Projects, in the amount of $2,750,000 for Phase Two, and that would be combined with current money already in Capital Projects from HHSA to satisfy their funding requirements for their project, so that concludes my presentation.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Thanks to the supervisors.
John, on the, on the Tullary Acres, what does that put the total, with, with the cost of the purchase, and the improvements, and now additional improvements, what does that put the cost at?
Okay, so we purchased the building for 15 and a quarter million, at 15.25 million, and we are, uh, if I, I'll go back up to that slide really quickly, we are, for that property, um, let's say, uh, over two and a half million dollars of construction, plus several, another, uh, if I recall, another million and a half or so for furnishings, so we're in the three to four million dollars territory, they're easily four, um, so 19, pushing 20 million for the total building.
And is that still less than we could have done it elsewhere, I mean, what are we looking at a square foot?
So, for square footage, I would need to do so quick, if you could, excuse me.
I, I think the, the way to look at it best, Amy, is what would it have cost if the county built the building, uh, and what we would have gotten?
Yeah, but we wouldn't have built it that, that large, obviously, and I know we're.
But, but apples to apples comparison.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not.
Don't forget the revenue that's bringing.
Exactly, I was going to bring that up next, I just want to have it out there, I'm not questioning it, or anything, I just.
Hundred, hundred and five dollars.
Per square foot, for purchase and the renovation.
Thank you.
All right. Who approves, Chairman?
Second. All right, I have a motion by, any questions or comments from members of the public before we vote? Okay, so we have a motion by Worley, a second by.
Crocker.
Crocker, all, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, that concludes our, uh, general, uh, session, our open session, now we need to take up our addendum, Mr. Ennis.
Where are you going?
Take up our addendum, uh, item number one, which is a request to the Human Resources Department.
He thought lunch was here.
To approve the tentative agreement and authorize such changes to the MOU for the, uh, Tullary Professional Association of Tullary County Physicians Bargaining Unit 16. Rhonda.
Good afternoon, Rhonda Schustrom, Human Resources Director. The first item before you is the request to, um, adopt the tentative agreement and incorporate changes into the MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, for our agreement with PAT COP, our physicians. Um, of note for this agreement is it is a two-year agreement, um, recommended compensation increases include a 3% COLA the first year, a 3% COLA the second year, and equity increases the first and second year of 5% each. When we talk about equity increases, that is where we take a look at salaries in comparison to the market, and in comparison to the other, uh, entities, um, that we look at on a regular basis, and to see where our, uh, positions are in terms of compensation and in terms of salary. So for the physicians, we took a look at, um, regional counties, as well as we did a Western States comparison, um, through the Medical Group Management Association. We also looked at parity within HHSA and other similar-based positions. When we looked at other counties, we lagged 15 to 24% behind in salary only. When we looked at the Western States, it was 21 to 31% behind in salary. From a historical perspective, we looked back as far as 2002, um, we had not provided, um, any equity increases or salary changes other than cost of livings to our physicians. There are 11 positions in this unit, so certainly, being out 21 to 31%, um, warrants equity increases in comparison to what we have given, um, in past years for other, uh, positions in the county. Provisions of this MOU also is adding the, continuing the sickly buyback, um, adoption of revised personnel rules and employment relation policies, um, adding a $20 per pay period to family dependent coverage for benefits, bringing on the deferred compensation match program for this unit, that previously did not have it, and we also did some other, um, items such as continuing education, increasing, um, that by $1,150. So I request that the board approve, um, the tentative agreement and modifications to the Memorandum of Understanding for the PAT COP Bargaining Unit 16.
Any questions or comments from board members? Still moved? Okay, we have any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, seeing none, I have a motion from Supervisor Ennis, and a second by Supervisor Crocker, please vote. Motion passes unanimously, once Shuckling decides to vote.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. I will now take up, uh, the next item on our addendum, which is addendum item number two, request from the Human Resources Department to approve the tentative agreement and authorize such changes to the MOU for GLAW.
Will you?
Rhonda.
This is asking for, uh, we reached tentative agreement with GLAW, or G-LAW, as I believe it's pronounced, um, and preferred by the unit, um, we reached tentative agreement, they rat-, their unit ratified, and so we're bringing before you, uh, for adoption of the tentative agreement and changes to the MOU. Um, there are 97 allocated positions in this unit, that include the DA, District Attorney, and Public Defender Attorneys, um, and, uh, senior attorneys, and then attorney in child support, and a senior attorney in child support. This is a two-year, uh, agreement, salary increases proposed are 3% for the first year and 2% for the second year, provisions for sickly buyback, as well as $20 per pay period increase for dependent healthcare coverage, again, we look, we took revisions to personnel rules and the employment relations policy, um, to the group as well, which was approved, county match for deferred compensation program, clarification for the vacation accrual, so it is consistent with our personnel rules and is placed within the MOU, and then the addition of 24 hours of admin-, administrative time to be added, um, to the current 40 that this, uh, unit receives, um, in lieu of paid overtime. The administrative time is, uh, accrued on July 1st, it is a use it or lose it time, it does not carry over, and it does have to be scheduled within the department in order to, um, take that time off. And finally, this group has asked for agency shop, which has been put into the provisions of the MOU, um, first, they need to get a signed petition of 3% of the employees, uh, that would want to take this forward, and then an approval of a majority of employees who would cast their ballots on a secret ballot election. Ask for adoption of the tentative agreement and the MOU.
Okay, any questions or comments from board members? Okay, any questions or comments from board members? Any member of the public wishing a question or comment?
I have a question.
Seeing none, Supervisor Worthley?
Do we have agency shop anywhere in Tullary County?
Yes, we do. We have it in our TCCA and in our deputy sheriffs, I believe.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Move approval?
I philosophically do not like agency shops, but.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Shuckling, a second by Supervisor Ennis. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
And I would just add that I'll be bringing an agreement next week, which was ratified this weekend by the firefighters. I don't know how they did it, why they were out at the floodsite. We got agreement on Friday at noon, and they ratified over the weekend, so we'll be bringing that forward on July 11th.
Great, thank you very much, Rhonda. We'll now take up item number three on our addendum, which is a request from the County Administrative Office to waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance amending Section 1-03-2060 and 1-03-2061. Okay, go ahead, Sophia. No period in sight there either, go ahead.
I apologize.
You are the last, no pressure.
Yes, I am the last request, yay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, board members, CAO, Mr. Spada, Deanne, County Council, Sophia Almanza, Deputy CAO. Today I have the second reading to amend the ordinance code for the combined position for the Auditor Controller/Treasurer-Tax Collector. So I'm just going to go move right into reading the request. Waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance amending Section 1-03-2060 and 1-03-2061 of Article 23 of Chapter 3 of Part 1, and adding 1-03-2086 of Article 25 of Chapter 3 of Part 1. Pertaining to all other county offices, unanimous vote at a regular meeting with all members present is required. Direct the clerk to publish the ordinance after the adoption as required by law. All the changes that were proposed in the orig-, the first reading were incorporated and outlined in the agenda item. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from supervisors, members of the public? Any questions or comments regarding this? Okay, seeing none, I will bring it back to the board for action. I know that we had discussed this item extensively previously, and this is now before us for a formal action.
Move for approval.
I have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Worthley. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. That does conclude today's meeting of the Tullary County Board of Supervisors. Council, do we have need for closed session?
We do. Mr. Chairman, item C is being pulled. Regarding item G, the board will consider in closed session the court's appointment of the Chief Probation Officer to Bargaining Unit 10 with an annual salary of $139,500 and the same standard benefits provided to Bargaining Unit 10 employees, and I do expect an announcement out of closed session.
And Council, we are going to convene closed session at 1:30 following a lunch break. 1:30?
Want to take up one, item B before the lunch break, since the District Attorney is in the.
We, we can. I, I mean, it's going to be a long one. Do you have any issue with 1:30?
Uh, no. I would prefer if you could take other matters and I could be here at 2:00.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good. We'll take up the first part of the calendar, then we'll get to you.
Okay. Chairman would not be here at 2:00.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for your patience at today's meeting.
Just come back at 2:00.
Five minutes, I'll be right back. I'll be right back. Are you ready for me? This is Deanne Peterson, County Council, reporting out of closed session on item G. The Board of Supervisors took action in a personnel matter to set the annual salary in the amount of $139,500 and the same standard benefits as provided to Bargaining Unit 10 employees for the position of Chief, Chief Probation Officer for Michelle Bonwell, appointed as the Chief Probation Officer by the Superior Court. This concludes the reporting out for today.